Good afternoon. During the declared emergency in the city of Toronto, Committee of Adjustment virtual public hearings are being conducted by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform, and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing and a provincial order that limits attendance at public gatherings. My name is Bruce Mullock. Panel members this afternoon are Nimrod Salaman, Erin Cheng, and Joanne Hayes. This will be a virtual public hearing. Participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebEx, moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may do so by watching on YouTube. Participants who have registered in advance will be connected either by computer, phone, or tablet. All participants will automatically be muted on entry. When his or her item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Only the committee members will be participating by video. Registered participants will be participating by audio only. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called to speak. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anshnabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit in accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act, nineteen ninety as amended. This meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the city of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw which apply to property, permission to extend or to alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to severed property in order to create new lots. Anyone in attendance this afternoon who wants to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on a particular application must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address because Committee of Adjustment and T-Lab will be sending notifications and updates by email only. You may not agree with the decision of the committee. Decisions may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body, T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. I will call each item in the order that it is listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant will proceed with their presentation if requested by the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into the committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five-minute mark. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address, and please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed and may be asked to make a presentation to the committee on the application. Now, please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support of or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after the speaker has finished their presentation. When all the speakers are finished, the applicants and agents or the applicant or agent will have an opportunity to rebut, but only to those issues which were raised by the speakers. And this will mark the end of discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Panel members and staff, are there any declarations of interest?
To declare.
No? Seeing none. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, have you received any requests for deferral?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes. Item number thirty, twenty-four oh one Bluer Street West.
Thank you very much. Okay. And Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any files to be closed?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes. Item number thirty-eight, forty-three Orchard Park Boulevard. However, that is scheduled for four-thirty or shortly thereafter.
Thank you for that. Okay. All right then. Because there are a number of speakers registered for number thirty, let me just check with the moderator. Moderator, are many of those speakers actually standing by now?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We currently have one, two, three, four, five, six speakers, but the applicant is not in the attendance.
The agent is with us?
No. So I can give him a call.
We'll carry on with number twenty-one, the first on the agenda, and why don't you see if you can connect with that agent so that we can deal with that deferral request? And I noticed there are a significant number of registered speakers. Okay. Okay then.
Actually, through you, Mr. Chair, they are in the attendance now.
Good with us now?
The agent.
Very good. Let's go then. We're going to go then, panel, to the speak with the agent for number thirty, twenty-four oh one Bluer Street West, on which we do have a applicant request to defer. So, Agent, join us, please, by stating your name.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. My name is Mark Candello. I'm a planner at Glanville Shonard Associates, here on behalf of the applicant for twenty-four oh one Bluer Street West.
Thank you very much. And if you would, please tell the panel your reason for wishing to defer.
Absolutely. So, through you, Mr. Chair, this has been a relatively active file with a lot of moving parts. Through subsequent discussions with city staff, there was a revision made to the proposal, and that revision was filed with the C of A on Monday. And in the interest of fairness for this committee and all interested parties, we're requesting a referral to allow everyone the opportunity to review the revised proposal. And my client would also like the opportunity to consult with his neighbors on the surrounding streets to discuss the proposal with his neighbors and to look for opportunities to alleviate some of the concerns that have been raised with regards to the proposal.
Okay. Just let me break that down. So the applicant did submit an actual revision?
That's correct.
There's a submitted revision, and I'm assuming, obviously, that it's less onerous than the existing.
To your discretion, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay then. Now, just for the information of all, when a deferral is requested by an applicant, it is ultimately the Committee of Adjustment which makes the decision as to whether or not to defer. But in this case, we have a number of registered speakers who have carefully registered in advance and are standing by now to address the application. So what I'm going to do is this: I want to canvass them individually and quite quickly with just the one question, and that is, would they be in favor of a deferral? Mr. Salaman, go ahead.
Yeah. I wonder if it would just help everyone if the applicant can just explain what was the change that they had made on Monday, so it's clear how they what it is that they're proposing to actually now defer.
Yeah, very, very good point. Okay. Applicant, perhaps you could give us a thrust of the revision?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, to the committee member. The core of the change is the original application considered a rooftop patio as well as a rear yard patio. Through the revision, we have removed the rooftop patio from the application and have decreased the size of the rear yard patio, thus increasing the separation distance from the patio to the residential zone just south of property.
Okay. Thank you. That actually is helpful. Okay. Okay then. Proceedure remains the same. We do need to we'll canvass those that are registered and standing by to speak to the application to see if they would be inclined to defer or whether they'd like to go ahead and hear the application heard this afternoon. And if we were to hear it this afternoon, we would be hearing it as it stands, not as revised. So, first registered speaker, Mr. Moderator.
Diana, you've been unmuted.
Hello.
Hello there. State your name, please. Try again, please.
Hi there.
Hello again.
Hi, this is Diana Tristan.
I beg your pardon. Would you say that again?
I'm Diana Tristan.
Okay, you're Diana Tristan, okay. Diana, there has been a request by the agent to have the application deferred, and they have submitted revisions to the city in just the last couple of days. So would you be in favor or against deferring the application and allowing the new application to be distributed to nearby people? Or would you rather?
If I agree for the distribution, that doesn't mean that I agree with any changes they are proposing just yet, correct?
It doesn't mean that at all, no. It simply means that the application will be reissued with the revisions for you and everyone else to consider.
Okay, sure.
You'd be okay with that. Thank you very much. That's the only question I have for you. I'm just going to speak to all of the people that are registered. Next speaker, please.
Peter, you've been unmuted.
Please state your name.
Yes, my name is Peter Woke, resident at four Larkin Avenue.
Thank you. So, Peter, you may know the question. I'm going to ask you whether you would be in favor of allowing a deferral on this application to another meeting, a future meeting, in order that a revision which was submitted very recently can be distributed to everybody who is involved?
Mr. Chairperson, I've reviewed the revised drawings. I'm fully prepared to discuss this matter right now.
You'd be ready to go ahead now? Okay.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next speaker, please.
Sabrina, you've been unmuted.
Thank you. Sabrina McCloskey, I'm here on behalf of the Swansea Area Rate Pairs Association. Tough to say because I think you said if we have the discussion today, we're discussing it based on the original, right?
Yes, because the revision hasn't been the revision sounds like it substantially changes, so it would have to be redistributed.
So I've looked at it in the last minute or so, and, you know, I can see that it's we still have the backyard patio and still many of the factors are in play, but I'm okay if we wait so that we can have a discussion where everybody has the same information. That's fine. It doesn't substantially change what I have to say because all the factors are still there.
Very good. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mrs. or Mr. Bitlisny?
Yes.
You've been unmuted.
Good afternoon.
If you can try to maybe unmute yourself on your device. So through you, Mr. Chair, I can try to
We'll go on to the next speaker while you try to come back to that one.
Maria, you've been unmuted.
Good afternoon. My name is Maria Lomas, and I am a resident of eighteen Larkin Avenue.
Good afternoon.
We are aware of the changes that have been presented, but the twenty-nine twenty-seven residents of Larkin Avenue who signed the petition would like to continue with the meeting today.
You'd like to hear the application heard today. Okay. Thank you for that.
Yes, so we would like to keep it today.
Very good. And next speaker, please.
Slava, you've been unmuted.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Good afternoon.
I appreciate if you can have a hearing today and discussion because I took day off today to be present in this event and to participate in this event, and I'm a healthcare worker and a first responder, and it's very hard to take me day off. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And that's why we ask people about this. Okay. All right, panel. So do we manage to get Mr. Plidisny? Sorry.
I think so, yeah. Mr. Pitlisny, you've been unmuted on your phone. So if you can try to maybe unmute yourself on your end. It doesn't seem to be working.
Doesn't seem to be working. Okay then, panel. Just panelers, to sum that up, you made the decision on this deferral request. We did speak to five speakers. Two would say defer, and three would say, let's go ahead and hear the application today. Now, I just want to check with the Deputy Secretary Treasurer on something. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, am I correct that where we to proceed to hear this application this afternoon, that it would be hearing the application as it was distributed?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It appears that the revisions that are being imposed actually make the variances better in the sense of the proposal would remove the rooftop patio, would increase the setback, and would reduce the total area of the outdoor patios.
Right. So it doesn't necessarily then need to be distributed? It could be those revisions could be introduced to the panel this afternoon. Where we to proceed?
That is correct because they're not adding a variance that hasn't been circulated, and they're not worsening a variance.
I get it. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, panel, there's all the information. We have two registered speakers saying deferral is fine. Three are saying, let's go ahead. One, in fact, took the afternoon off to work to attend. And so the decision is up to the panel. We can take this into committee now for some discussion and a motion, please. Go ahead. Any thoughts on what we should do here? Ms. Hayes, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate the submissions we've heard on the deferral. Given the reasons, many of the reasons that are cited for objection and the extensive changes at the last minute, but after the notice was issued, I think there may be some utility to allow for some conversations to see whether or not any of the concerns can be addressed through through those discussions and whether or not that would result in additional changes to the application. It's hard to say. The separation distance has improved somewhat with respect to the rear, but those are my initial thoughts. It's just that some discussion, knowing all the reasons for objection, I think those discussions and the canvassing should have been and could have been done in advance. But here we are now, and whether or not we have a better potential outcome overall by allowing some further discussions outside of this session may be fruitful.
Thank you for those comments. Other panel members, Mr. Salaman, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I would agree with those comments. I think it would be helpful to defer, and what's brought forward has been some substantial changes, and with further discussions and meetings with residents in the area, that may result in further changes. So I think that would be useful.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to add scenes there as an intent to improve the presentation, and it's really hard to modify the variances during or, you know, in the negotiation of the hearing. It is better to defer it.
Okay, I'd go along with that. So I look to someone to make a motion, please. Ms. Hayes, please.
Thank you. I'd like to move to defer the application to allow all individuals that were in the original notification period to receive clear indication of what the new proposal is and have an opportunity to have discussions with the applicant and for the applicant to reach out to those people and for everyone to assess what their position is on the revisions.
Very good. Is there a second to that motion? It is seconded by Mr. Salaman. So moved and seconded to defer in order to allow the revisions to be processed and distributed and to allow further consultation between the applicant, agent, and interested parties. All those in favor, show of hands, please. That's unanimous vote to carry the motion. The application is deferred. It's so deferred until the next available date. And I just want to express thanks to the registered speakers who took the time to pre-register, to attend, and I trust that they'll understand the reasoning here behind the committee's decision to defer. Let's move along then now back to our first item on the afternoon agenda. That takes us back to number seventy-three, Chestnut Park. And on this application, the panel has before it submitted materials. There's an arborist report, December. There's a heritage impact assessment from GEMO Architects, GEMO, sorry, Architects, February. And there are presentation materials from Richard Wengel, the agent, March twenty-three. There is correspondence and support from seventy-two Chestnut Park. So let us have the agent join us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, we do, very clearly.
Good afternoon. It's Richard Wengel, architect. I'm the applicant's agent and have designed this home. I have a small presentation if the committee would like to hear.
Let's just check with them. Panel members, do we need a presentation, or do you want to go? Do you have any direct questions to put to the agent? I'm not hearing a request for presentation, nor do I hear any questions for a or any questions. So, that being the case, we can take the application into committee for a motion, please. Mr. Salaman, go right ahead.
Yeah, I think the variances that are being proposed are minor in nature. Given the nature of this lot, it's an unusual shape, pie-shaped lot, at a corner rounding. There's an existing very large old home on the property, and I think the variances are minor and result in appropriate development. And I would move approval with no conditions.
Thank you. That is seconded, Ms. Hayes. Moved and seconded to approve without condition. Those in favor? Motion carried. The application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Number twenty-two on our agenda is Twenty Davies Crescent. And on Twenty Davies, the panel has before it submitted materials, cover letter from the agent, arborist report from Bostock Consulting, dating back to October. We have comments and reports from City Planning, from Ravine and Natural Feature Protection, and we have a staff report from TRCA dated March twenty-three. There is correspondence in concern or interest from Twenty-two Davies Crescent, which is the subject address. So let's have the agent join us, please, by stating your name.
Hi, this is Parisa Amiri from Arbor Architects. I'm the agent and the architect on this application at fifty Woodville Avenue.
Very good. Good afternoon. Oh, pardon me, pardon me, I'm wrong. That That, yes, the subject address is 20 Davies. That piece of correspondence in interest or concern was from 22 Davies, probably next door. Thank you, okay. Panel members, questions? Presentation on this one? Hearing none, so I'll look to panel members. We can take the application into committee for a motion, please. Mr. Solomon, go right ahead.
Yeah, I think the variances are minor in nature. The FSI looks high because, you know, part of the site is located below the top bank, but overall, I think the FSI is minor and appropriate. So I would move approval with no conditions.
Thank you for that. Seconded to that motion, it is seconded, Ms. Hayes. So moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, please show hands. And that's unanimous vote, the motion's carried. Application's approved. On number 23 item, 28 Sproat Avenue, we have before us applicant's submission revised north and east elevations from November, pardon me, from March 23. We have various supporting materials from the agent, including an FSI map and a photo of the rear yard wall from March 23. And there's a cover letter also. We have commenting communication from urban forestry, and we have correspondence in support and in opposition. In support, 32 Sproat, a six signature petition from owners occupants, 25, 29, 30 Sproat, 326 Leslie, 36 and 44 Indian, and one additional signature on a petition in support from 26 Sproat. In opposition, there's correspondence from 19 Indian and from John Subotic, and also 19 Indian Nicole Herbert. Okay. Let's have the agent join us, please, by stating your name.
My name is Bart Sokey. I'm the agent for the owners and the architect on the project.
Very good.
I do have a brief presentation if the committee would like to hear that.
Thank you very much. Just let me check, we do have someone standing by? If you would, Bart, go ahead with your presentation, you have five minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Good afternoon, committee members. The owners for 28 Sproat have embarked on this little project because they wish to have more space to support a growing family and the future of hybrid work at home. The neighborhood and community is important to them, and they wish to live at this location long-term, so they seek to add to the 100-year-old house to accommodate modern living. You know, the main variance for FSI is, if we could bring up the FSI map, it's, we can see that in the area, there's been a lot of committee approvals for similar or greater FSI, and 14 of the 47 approvals in the neighborhood are above the 1.09 requested by 28 Sproat. And, you know, we suggest this pattern of approvals for FSI with the committee points to, you know, a desire and supportable increase in density and a necessary increase toward the efficient and sustainable use of urban infrastructure. I mean, in terms of the building volume, given the lot size and placement of the house, the natural and only really viable location for an addition was at the rear. The addition at the rear complies with building length and setback requirements, and at two stories, it also complies with the height limits. In discussion with the neighbor, the north elevation of the second floor was modified to slope proof with the dormer to create a softer and less imposing roof profile at the north side. The other variance for the deck stair is a result of us extending the stair across the width of the deck, and this was proposed to maintain an unobstructed due to the garden by reducing the guards required around the north side of the deck. In terms of neighborhood engagement, the owners reached out to neighbors in the weeks prior to the hearing to give some information and hear concerns and seek support, and the owners have made efforts to address the concerns voiced by neighbors which resulted in the change to the north elevation. As mentioned, we have, you know, six neighbors signing a petition, and one neighbor submitted a letter supporting the design as revised. So we feel it's a reasonable proposal for increasing density in the city, and hope that the committee can support this.
Thank you very much. Okay, panel, questions now for the agent? Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
Yeah, can the applicant just verify whether is the existing FSI currently at .91, and is the proposed GFA, additional GFA, about 25 square meters?
See, if we could go to the site plan, I don't know if you can zoom into that. The, I'd have to do a quick calculation, the, let me see, I think it's 120. Just give me a moment.
Take your time, take your time.
It's bear with me a second here.
Take your time, please.
Yeah, I'm happy to, you know, let the applicant come back on rebuttal and provide that information.
Very good, okay. Let's go on then to the speaker that's standing by. So we'll come back for that information, agent after the speaker.
Okay.
Standing by has spoken, and let's go to that speaker now.
John, you've been unmuted.
Oh, thank you. Hi, hi, committee, my name is John Subotic. My partner Nicole Herbert is absent, but I think she's named there, and we are residents at 19 Indian, and I have submitted a letter of objection to the plan. I, after having, yeah, after having reviewed the letter, I realized that the property that I'm referring to is the property beside, to the west of the subject property. And my understanding is their proposal now, in hindsight, is the same as that of theirs, which we did not contest, and I now regret, because that has moved their backyard well into mine, and I'm concerned that the same is going to occur here. The, while I accept the urban realities of density, I'm concerned about this. I'm not sure, in drawing A07, I'm not sure what the depth.
Just hang on a second then, John, let's pull up A007, is it 07?
A07, A07.
Just a moment while we pull that up.
Yeah, go ahead.
But maybe you could explain this for me. You mentioned that your letter, you realized, was related to another property.
It was related.
But your letter still, your letter still is, you want your letter to stand?
Well, it embraces the same concern.
Okay.
So while I was mistaken about the property, the encroachment concerns that I had have remained the same.
Okay, so here's the drawing, I think, can we magnify it a bit?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it. So section AB, oh, okay, now with, I can see the dimensions. What is that, probably 12 feet, or 10 feet to 3 meters or so? 10 foot, 10 foot, okay. And then the 6 feet for, so it's a total of 16 feet.
Tell us your concern.
My concern, because my backyard backs onto theirs. My neighbor to whom I, you know, responded emotionally in the letter, had a young family, as I did when I moved here, and they built a home to accommodate the family, which I respect and admire. And I know that this is the intention of the new owners, whom I haven't met, which I'm embarrassed about. But, that being said, the, my enjoyment of my backyard, the privacy and intimacy that I once enjoyed seems to have been shattered, and this further encroachment concerns me. Looking at it now, and I enjoy my backyard. I spend a lot of time, energy, to make it an environment where I spend a great deal of my, you know, seasonal enjoyment in the yard.
John, what's the impact of this then on your backyard? How does this, how does the proposal impact your backyard?
It's bringing their activity much closer to mine. If that expresses it.
Okay.
That back porch in the backyard, their family will be 16 feet closer, which downtown, it's a lot of heat. So, that's my concern. I'm sorry I didn't speak to the owners, but I responded to this petition when I saw it, and I still have the concern. I see what they're doing, the plan, it's a nice plan, it's a typical plan that's, you know, these days, but, I don't know, a lot of airspace is going to be left between us. That's my concern.
Thank you very much, okay. Let's see if there are any questions for you from the panel. Panel members, any questions here? I'm not hearing any. Let's go back now then to the agent, and we'll ask the agent to respond in rebuttal to what you've said.
Okay, thank you. Could you scroll to the site plan at the, look above, please? There we are, thank you, thanks. So, you know, we did see the letters of objection from the neighbors at 19 Indian, and, you know, our response to it is that, you know, the addition complies in length and rear yard setback. So it's not closer to the lot line abutting 19 Indian than is what is permitted. The height of the addition complies with the bylaws, so there doesn't create an undue overlook condition on the Indian. And the glass areas in the north elevation facing 19 Indian are, they're not overly As well, there are several large trees in the rear yard between 28 Sproat and 19 Indian, which provide a visual screen when they're in foliage. So we felt that taken together, those, the addition maintains a reasonable visual privacy for the residents of 19 Indian. And to the panel members' earlier question, I believe they're asking what the FSI of the existing house is? Am I correct in that?
Yes, what's the FSI currently, and then what's the size of the new, the additional GFA that's being proposed?
Okay, pardon me, so the, the current FSI is 0.92, and let me just, just do the calculation on the difference, so. So the difference, the additional floor area is 24.85 square meters. Thank you.
Okay. Very good then. Okay, panel members, your opportunity now, questions for the agent if there are any further ones? I'm not hearing any. So hearing no further questions, we can take this application into committee for a motion. Who's ready? Mr. Solomon, go ahead, please.
I think the variances that are being proposed are minor in nature. The existing FSI is already at .91, and the size of the addition is fairly modest in overall size, so I do believe the variances are minor, and I would move approval of the variances subject to urban forestry condition number two.
Thank you. Is there a second to that? Seconded by Mr. Chang.
And I just want to add that there was no rear yard setback in this application. So as of right, I just want to let the neighbor know that there's a reason why I would support it, just not because I don't respect his opinion, but by the, just following the bylaw, your neighbor could have just been to that extent.
Very good.
I just have, just have one query, just of my colleagues. With respect to the, I guess, the terrace on the third floor? Is that, do you think that, given that it's set back quite a ways, do you think that there's any screening that's needed? Or do you think it's set back far enough from the rear wall that there's no overlook issues? We don't have a recommendation for that condition, but just one of your thoughts.
Staff is going to put up the elevation there for the rear, okay. Thank you, staff.
I think it's acceptable without having screen, it's in the middle of the building.
Yeah, that's what I, I just wanted, just to have a discussion about it. Thank you.
Same way as well.
Okay. So where we are now is motion from Mr. Solomon, which was seconded by Mr. Chang. And we haven't amended that motion, so moved and seconded to approve, subject to forestry. All those in favor, please show hands. And that vote is unanimous to carry the motion and to approve the application. Thank you. We proceed to number 24, 350 Davenport Road. Committee has before it submission materials, cover letter from the agent, committee of adjustment decisions from 2015, two of them, an arborist report, and presentation material from the agent 23 March. Correspondence supporting from 354 Davenport, from the Davenport Triangle Residents Association, from 115 Dupont. from 115 Dupont. Correspondence received in opposition from 354 Davenport Road. This to retract previous support. So, very good. Let us on to number 24. Have the agent join us, please.
Matthew? Are you able to hear me? Hi there, are you able to hear me?
Very clearly.
Excellent, thank you. Excellent. I have a presentation for you, members of committee, through you, Mr. Chair, if you'd like to hear.
I'm going to just ask you to hang on for a moment, please. We do have... Yes, we'd like to hear your presentation. You have five minutes. Go on.
Thank you very much. My name is Matthew Helfand, and I'm a lawyer at Eardan Burles. I represent the owner of 350 Davenport Road. We're here before you today requesting four variances, being two identical variances from 43886 and 5692013, to permit an increase in the permitted height and FSI of an already approved eight-story building. By way of background for the committee and in respect of the previous decisions, in October 2016, the committee granted 13 variances to permit the construction of a seven-story mixed-use building on the site. After further consultations with staff and the ward counselor, my client then applied for and was granted additional committee approval in February 2020 to increase the permitted height to eight stories, among some other changes. Today, my client seeks to further modify the proposed building, primarily to convert the retail portion of the mixed-use building into a home, office, and workspace for his architectural practice and add a mezzanine level on the first floor. The height variance is required to accommodate the proposed mezzanine level, and the FSI increase results from the conversion of the retail space to home office uses. In particular, the height increase that is requested is to 32.05 meters, whereas 29.65 is currently permitted. And the FSI is seeking an increase of 4.7 times the area of the lot, whereas currently 4.15 times the lot area is permitted. Terms of the four tests, it is my submission that the application satisfies all four. The site is located within a mixed-use area, which permits single-use residential buildings. Mixed-use areas are intended to receive much of the new housing in the city in the coming decades, and the residential building, therefore, the use is entirely permitted and contemplated, and also helps to support new residential units. We've prepared shadow studies as well, which were enclosed with my letter, to test whether there would be any impact on adjacent properties, and particularly on any neighborhood-designated areas. And what you'll see is that there's extremely limited new shadowing overall, and very minute shadowing in terms of neighborhood areas in the matter of about one minute during the winter months, as the committee can see. And we think that this is minor. In terms of the zoning bylaw, the permitted height increase is... The requested height increase is just a small increase from what is already permitted and is well within the range of the previous approvals. I asked you to go to tab two of my letter, which would be on PDF page 17. You can scroll. I'll continue until you get there. You'll see that this area of Davenport has received many different approvals and proposed buildings for heights that are equal to or much greater than what's being sought here. And that's the same in terms of FSI. The variance to increase the GFA is the result of a conversion from retail space, so there's no external impact from this increased FSI. And the design of the building is such that the commercial character at the front will be maintained. So from a character perspective, the home office use supports the spirit of what was previously the commercial space. And so the commercial character is maintained. We think that this is appropriate in the context, in terms of height and FSI. We also think that the proposal is minor and desirable. From a numerical standpoint, the difference between the current application and the previous approval is very small. And we also see no undue adverse impacts. We've also consulted the Davenport Triangle Guiding Principles, which are designed by council in May 2018. And the proposal supports these principles: eight-story height, maintaining stepbacks above the fourth and sixth floor, high-quality architectural materials, and an animated laneway by the amenity space at the rear. These are all touched on, and we think it very much supports the vision of this area. I note in closing the letters of support that were filed by an adjacent neighbor to the rear of the laneway and the Davenport Triangle Residents Association. The committee does have a speaker registered, Mr. DePaulo. And I'll just note in closing, he represents an adjacent neighbor. In advance of this hearing, he and his client did raise issues regarding the north-facing windows of our proposal. These windows are not strictly part of this application because they were, in fact, already approved by the committee. But our respective clients did reach an agreement that these windows will be removed by my client in its next site plan submission and through building permit drawings. And Mr. DePaulo will speak to that as well. So an agreement has been reached, and I anticipate he will be speaking to his support of this application. So for those reasons, it's my submission that the application should be approved because it meets the four tests, and I welcome any questions from the committee.
Thank you for that. Let's... Panel, let's go ahead and hear from Mr. DePaulo. And then we'll have a good understanding. Mr. DePaulo, ready to join us?
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, can you hear me fine?
We hear you well.
Great, thank you. My name is James DePaulo. I am a planner at Urban Strategies. And as Matthew mentioned, I represent Designers Walk Inc., who is the owner of 354 Davenport Road, which is immediately adjacent to the subject site. As Matthew mentioned, we had raised concerns with the applicant and the legal counsel around the windows on the building's west elevation, which, given the alignment of Davenport, is sort of facing north. As Matthew mentioned, these windows aren't the subject of the variances being requested. However, the zero lot line condition, in our opinion, would impact and limit the development potential of our client's property, which, like 350 Davenport, is a relatively narrow site, so already very constrained from a development perspective. As Matthew mentioned, we've been having discussions, and we've reached an agreement in principle that the windows would be removed from the plans through site plan application, as well as the building permit stage. And we're currently working through the details of that agreement. Aside from the windows, which I note again aren't the subject of the variance being requested, in my opinion, as a planner who has experience working on various sites in and around Davenport Triangle, including the large property on the corner there, 306 to 326 Davenport, as well as the building immediately north on Bedford Road, as well as 354 Davenport Road, I can say that I can support this application. The requested variances are minor in nature, and they meet the intent of the official plan and the zoning bylaw. And in my opinion as well, they're desirable in that the proposal advances the vision of the block as is articulated through the Davenport Triangle guidelines. And that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any questions for that speaker panel? Okay, then. There's no reason to go back to the agent for rebuttal because there are no points to rebut. So, I think at this stage, we can take this application... Unless you have further questions for the applicant, we can take this application into committee for a motion, please. Or comments. First, if anyone has a comment they'd like to voice about the application. Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
I'm going to move a motion to approve the variances. They are minor in nature and result in appropriate and desirable development. And so the motion is to approve with no conditions.
Seconded by... Is that a second, Ms. Hayes, or do you have a question?
Yes. No, it's a second.
Second. It is seconded by Ms. Hayes. Moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, show of hands, please. And that vote is unanimous. So motion is carried, and the application is approved. Thank you. And the panel moves along to number 25, 251 Humbercrest. On this application, we're looking at the submitted materials and then a revised site plan from February 14, which was received. And that is the limit of the materials we have before us. So... Moderator, we'll have the agent join us now, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Brad Netkin, Stamp Architecture. I'm the agent and architect for this application.
Good afternoon to you.
I don't have a presentation, per se. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good, okay. Panel, any questions for the architect? No. I'm not hearing any. So that being the case, Ms. Hayes, go ahead.
I'm just prepared to move a motion if you're prepared.
Go ahead.
Thank you. If my colleagues have no comments, I'd like to proceed to move a motion to approve the application. I think a couple of the variances represent existing conditions. I believe the request in FSI is not unreasonable and would not make the resulting building out of step. It is, I think, appropriate, and I would move to approve the application with no conditions.
Very good. Is there a second? It is seconded, Mr. Chang. Those moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, show hands, please. And there we go. That's unanimous vote, and that motion is carried. Application number 25 is approved. On number 26, 44A Birch Avenue, we have submitted materials, cover letter from the architect, March 14, and three form letters in support coming from owners and occupants of 41, 42, and 44 Birch Ave. So we shall ask the agent to join us.
Good afternoon. My name's Heather Asquith. I'm the agent and applicant for the file at 44A Birch Avenue.
Good afternoon to you. Panel members, any questions for the agent? No. Don't think we need a presentation. Agent, if there was one thing you wanted to tell the panel about your application, one important thing we should know about it, what would it be?
Yeah, I think this is an application to build a porch on the front of the house, which is in keeping with several other porches along the north side of Birch Avenue, including two houses to the east, which is part of the attached row. So I think it repeats the fabric of the existing street, and it's appropriate development for the site.
Thank you very much. Okay. Let's take the application into committee for a motion. Ms. Hayes, go ahead.
Thank you. I agree with what the applicant's representative just said. In reviewing materials on site and looking at the streetscape of the property, this is not unprecedented. There is a similar built form at number 42, and it's not out of character. I believe the variances themselves are minor and appropriate. And I would move a motion to approve the application with no conditions.
Thank you. Does that have a second? It is seconded, Mr. Chang. Moved and seconded to approve. All in favor? Unanimous vote there. The motion is carried, and that application, 44A Birch Ave, is approved. Number 27, 108 Colbeck. Here we have the submitted materials, cover letter from the agent, and opposition from Brian and Melissa Lynch
Oh, is there?
Oh.
At 569 Windermere Avenue. So let's have the agent join us, please.
Hello.
Hello. State your name, please.
It's Megan Hall from Rose Hall Homes as the agent for 108 Colbeck.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Okay, checking with you. There's someone standing by?
Yep.
Okay, agent. You have five minutes to present your application to the panel. Go ahead.
Sure. One of the things we wanted to start with is there seems to be some confusion with the letter from the neighbor around the scale of this project. So we wanted to clarify that we are rebuilding the existing enclosed front porch with its sunroom and mudroom. And part of that project means rectifying the existing front stairs, which do not currently meet Ontario Building Code because there's no landing at the front door. So the current stairs encroach into the required front yard setback for this house already. And the proposed new stairs, we have turned the design that allows for the required platform at the front door while closely matching the front yard encroachment of the existing staircase. In addition, you can see that from the supporting document, previous variances in the neighborhood requesting deeper encroachment have been approved by the committee. All in all, the design maintains the character of the house and the neighborhood while meeting the requirements of the Ontario Building Code and not setting any new variance precedence for platform encroachment in the front yard.
Thank you. Okay. Let us go to the person registered in opposition, please.
Hi, it's Gregory Yates calling or speaking. Can you hear me okay?
Hear you fine. Thank you. Go ahead.
So we live next door at 110 Colbeck Street, and we have a shared drive. Now, from my understanding, that the stairs are actually going to be encroaching and actually entering onto the shared drive, which is right-of-way, which is basically coming in about 30 centimeters, which is approximately a foot. Our concern is that this will prevent us and other future occupants of our house of being able to access the drive and being able to access the garages at the back of the drive. Though myself and my neighbor do not park in the garages, the previous owners did. The guy that used to live in his house used to park his huge Parisian and used to back it up when he was 84 years old. And I... My house... Excuse me. The guy that used to live in my house used to park his Camaro in our driveway or in his garage. So it is accessible. It isn't like you can't get a car. Excuse me.
Take your time. Take your time. I'll just... Could you even mind if I touch more, please? Because this is very good. All right.
So other concerns, too, is if the panel does approve this, is the stairs still considered right-of-way? So for example, I have a huge tree in my backyard. If I have to get a cherry picker down there, are they allowed to rent it over top of the stairs? If future people are parking in that, are they allowed to drive the car over the stairs? Other concerns are, I don't see in the picture where their gas meter is going to go. Right now, their gas meter sits right beside the stairs, where the stairs are coming down. Are they planning on putting the gas meter on the drive as well? It's just, I'm not quite sure what they're planning on doing with this. So our primary issue is the right-of-way. And does this basically affect the right-of-way for the entire drive? Does it just affect it just for that one spot? And basically, we're concerned about possible future resale value of our house if we no longer have a shared drive.
Thank you very much. Questions, panel, for this? Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
I'm wondering whether you've had an opportunity to meet with your neighbor and discuss your concerns.
Initially, he first spoke to me about what he was planning on doing. And he intended the stairs to be entirely coming down onto the shared drive. And I told him, after speaking to my wife, that there's no way we could support something like that, that basically that was encroaching. And he thought that, oh, well, no one can access the driveway anyway, so it shouldn't matter. So when I spoke to him about it, they said, okay, well, they go back. And they wouldn't do it. They revised the plans. So basically, they come out and putting the stairs 30 centimeters into the driveway. Well, I'm sure that the rebuttal from the agent's going to be, well, it's only 30 centimeters. Well, it's only 30 centimeters. Why can't they put 30 centimeters back onto their property or change the stairs around? So they come down to the front pad and give up the front pad parking, which I did support, and I wouldn't have done it at the time[1777.66] and give up the front pad parking, which I did support, and I wouldn't have done it at the time if I knew they were going to be doing this. It was the previous owners who did the front pad, not them, I may add. And secondly, why can't they possibly get the stairs going the other direction, coming out to the front of the house, to the other side, heading east on Colbeck instead of west?
My question for this speaker is this. As you look at the screen that we're looking at right now, as I read that drawing, it looks to me as if the stair is in alignment with the side wall of the property of the house. Is this how you understand the application?
I understand it was supposed to come 30 centimeters into the drive.
Okay, that doesn't show in that drawing, and in that drawing, it appears to be in perfect alignment. So?
I mean, if it doesn't block the driveway, I'm not concerned.
Okay. Well, let's keep that magnified view up, and we'll go back now to the applicant for comment and rebuttal. Let's go back.
Hello. Yes, I wanted to clarify that Gregory is right. We originally had a discussion with a different location for the staircase that we talked through, the owners of the house and Gregory talked through, in terms of what some options might be. He's quite right. He said he didn't want it to encroach in the shared driveways. So we revised the plans, which is what you see before you here, so that the staircase doesn't encroach in any way, shape, or form into the right of way. You can see that the staircase is recessed a little bit into the landing, and that's what we've done so that it lines up with the side of the house and not into the driveway.
Thank you for that. Okay. Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
And so how, what is the dimension that it is set back from the driveway?
So it lines up exactly with the right of way and the edge of the house.
Oh, so it's not actually set back from the driveway. It is right on the driveway line?
That first step is, yeah.
Ms. Hayes? Ms. Hayes, go ahead.
We often hear before this committee and consider access and safety when there's a shared driveway and staircases or doorways that are opening or enter right there. We've seen it with respect to people putting in accesses to basements, and they come right up onto a driveway. What's the, I have some concerns with respect to safety and stepping out from behind that wall if indeed this can be used as a driveway or someone can be coming down that way. Could I have your response to that, please?
Yes, of course. There are two side entrances to both the existing house at 108 Colbeck and the house at 110 Colbeck that are halfway down that driveway that exit directly into the shared driveway. So this staircase isn't any different than the materials that already exist in the house. And it also, the pillar that you're looking at in the plan, in the down view of the plan, what you can't see is that it's got a bit of an angle on it. It's quite a bit wider at the base than it is at the top. So you actually get a very good sightline as you come around that corner to see down the driveway and also towards the street.
Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
And the neighbor had asked, but what is happening to the gas meter that is located at the front?
It's moving from the west side of the stairs to the east side of the stairs.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chang, yes?
Yeah, so I actually have the same question as the neighbor is. Why wouldn't you shift the staircase to be coming from the other direction? This is a new construction that we're going to approve on 2022. So I just want to give you that background. The information that in front of me right now doesn't seem to meet the basic safety standard of today's standard.
So the reason the staircase is going towards the paved access road is because if it goes the other direction, then that is eating up more front yard landscaping for a pathway for the household members to get in and out of the space. Whereas what we have done is we've angled it towards the existing paved areas so that we don't have to remove any more soft landscaping in the front yard.
Excuse me, let's, staff, take us back to the drawing, the colored rendering? Okay. And I'm sorry to interrupt you there. Carry on with your response, please.
That was the end of the response, sorry.
Now, as I look at this drawing, it appears that the chimney, the chimney actually, as you go down halfway down the house, if you were driving up the driveway, the chimney represents a potential restriction on the width of the driveway, but the staircase, no. That's a question for the agent.
Oh, sorry. I didn't realize it was a question. The chimney actually doesn't go all the way down to the ground as it's shown in that rendering?
Okay. It's purposely kept up, I see, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So just a follow-up question, because your drawing right now is in the middle of a green field with no houses around. I'm just looking at the Google map. Give myself a little bit more context. So the current staircase is facing Colbeck, am I right?
That's correct.
So you want to expand that?
The current staircase, you'll notice, has no landing at the front door, which doesn't meet Ontario Building Code?
So you basically want to enclose the vestibule, I mean, the front deck. And for that reason, you still need the staircase to go up to your main door. And for that reason, you push the staircase to the front, which this is the reason why you have the variance in front of us now. And instead of, you also have a tree, so it's pretty...
Sorry. What house are you looking at? Because there's no tree at 108 Colbeck.
108, well, maybe I'm looking at the wrong one then. Let's see, 106. Sorry, 108, yes, now I see now, right. So you lose the parking deck over there. Oh, in that case, I think probably, I still don't understand why you can't turn the staircase to the other side or go straight or keep it as is. The improvement is creating something that is not very safe for everyone, especially as a right of way. So you all have a bit, but you're sharing the right with your neighbor.
So I think you're asking why the staircase isn't going straight out towards Colbeck? And that one is because there's not enough room for it to go straight out towards Colbeck. As you can see, the existing staircase goes straight out towards Colbeck. And if we meet Ontario Building Code's requirements with the landing at the door, then that existing staircase projects even more than the variance that we're asking for now in terms of front yard setback. It would be quite a bit out towards Colbeck. And I'm sorry, I missed what the second question was.
Now that, so it's going to want to ask if that will take away your front parking?
Yes, it would. It would impact the front parking.
Mr. Solomon, question?
Yeah, oh, sorry. Yeah?
Yeah. The existing condition, isn't the front porch already enclosed?
It is indeed, yes.
And you do have stairs in front of that, and so when this was built, how did it comply then? With building code?
When they enclose that front porch and when they put the staircase in, it's entirely possible that it was never done with a permit or any sort of guidance from the city. Based on the age of the construction and what it looks like, I would say that it's probably from the 70s.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If there are no further questions for the agent, let's take this application into committee for a motion, please. Any thoughts first? Any thoughts by members? Now that we're in committee, any thoughts anybody wants to share?
I just don't think it is professionally safe to recommend or support a design that I can see some potential issues regarding to safety, so I cannot support it. I have no problem with the variance. I wish they could reconfigure the front lawn to have the staircase swinging back to the other direction. That's my comment.
I've got to say, I think the staircase configuration does improve on the existing because there is a landing at the top there. There's a place to turn around and stand, get your breath, whatever. And by going sideways across the front of the house, it doesn't interfere with that front parking. Any other thoughts about it, Mr. Solomon?
Yeah, I do have concerns with the way that the stairs are being proposed. And I think this is, the proposal, in fact, then is creating this situation, which I think has some safety issues.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, I'll weigh in. I don't like staircases coming out to driveways. Having said that, the applicant has indicated that both of these homes have side doors that open directly onto that shared right of way. So I'm not sure that the staircase is going to present any greater degree of safety concern as those. I don't love it, but I I actually wish they could do a switchback or put it the other way. I just think it's an odd choice.
Exactly what I'm thinking, but then they might have to go back and redo the front soft landscape calculation so we can't just impose a condition. I was hoping that I can help by suggesting to switch the staircase and passing this application. And I also don't think that it will be on the record, 2022 March, the committee of adjustment approved this staircase, and that becomes a new standard. So I really don't want that to happen.
Okay.
Because they may, they could possibly, if they switched it the other way, they could possibly recover some of that space where the staircase is going as soft landscaping, like the staircase isn't going.
That's true. So I guess maybe I can try.
I think it's a safety concern for me.
Yeah. Can I try to propose that we can approve of a condition that the staircase cannot be swinging to the, I mean, cannot be directed to the military driveway?
Well, another option...
I think you can. It just may mean when they submit it, they may need an additional variance. If the encroachment doesn't change, you'd be okay, but it may trigger another variance for landscaping.
Right. But they are going to sacrifice the parking anyway, so maybe they can maybe they can reconfigure that. I think there's enough space for them to work that around. But yeah, I'll listen to Nivar's suggestion. He was going to say something.
Yeah, I mean, another option is to put a condition that the stair be located a minimum of X point X meters away from the driveway. And then it's then up to the applicant to revise the drawing of the stairs so that however they want to swing it, it's got to be a minimum distance from that driveway, so that if they were still to angle the stairs in that direction, somebody stepping off the stair would have a landing at the ground level before they get to the driveway, so that would deal with the safety issue.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I think 1.2 meters is the standard for a landing, or 1.5, can't remember.
I think those are both, I think, Aaron, I think from my position, I'd prefer to have a condition that simply says, you know, we improve the variance and say that the stairs can't exit the driveway. I'm not sure we can determine, I mean, you know building code more than I do, but what condition are we going to put specifically with respect to distance from the
Right, yeah.
From the center line of the right of way, from the, I don't know what the right number would be.
Right, right.
Because I'm prepared to be convinced, but I just don't know what the right number is.
That's true. So let's not put a number, but just mention about not exiting directly into right of way or driveway.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we ask staff if there's any concern with that type of condition?
Yes, let's do that. Madam, if we were to do that, are we creating any issues that we don't intend?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I am a bit concerned about that condition based on the variance that is before us. Because the variance that is before us is for the platform area, right, from the front yard setback? And the stairs would have to be redirected to the east side then and not to the west side.
Yes.
Then again, that may eat up into the landscape area, and that would trigger another variance.
Yeah, there may be another variance. I don't think the encroachment variance would change, though.
No, 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 that wouldn't change.
Okay, I'm going to float another option here. Do we give them an opportunity to defer and change the plan and see what they come back with?
There's an option.
Yes, better than rejecting it.
There's an option. We could do that. Well, we could go back to the applicant now, bring the applicant, go out of committee, bring the applicant back in and say that we're faced with two options here, either refuse or deferral to allow revision of the plan. Shall we go back to the applicant? Yep. Okay, applicant, we're going to bring you back into the conversation now. I'll just ask the moderator, moderator, can you bring the applicant, okay? Applicant, please let us know you're with us.
Hello.
There you are, okay. So you see, I think I just stated it, we're sort of, as you can see, the panel is leaning toward either refusal or a deferral to allow you to revise to revise the direction of the staircase. Do you see what we have in mind? Or do you see the option that we're looking at? Yes.
Some confusion here around the parking pad and the driveway and the angle of the staircase and front yard landscaping, if I've understood the conversation correctly. And that's what the deferral request is for, is to clarify those pieces?
No, we're not asking you to clarify. We're asking you to use the deferral to revise it so that the stairs don't give way onto the driveway for safety reasons.
Oh, I see.
That's the thrust of all this. Safety is at the bottom of all this discussion.
In fairness, regardless of sort of where the conversation started, the end result of deferral versus rejection, yes, we would like the deferral as opposed to the other option.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go back into committee now. So we're going to go back into committee. And there you are, panel. We have heard those comments from the agent. Is anyone, does that give anyone the wherewithal to go forward with a motion? Ms. Hayes, go ahead, please.
If my colleagues are okay, I'll give it a shot. I'd like to move a motion to defer the application to allow the applicant to reconsider their plans and to redirect the stairs from a safety perspective, from ending up on the driveway, and to allow them to consider that and then determine whether or not any additional or different variances may be necessitated.
I think that covers it because you've allowed there for what might be changes in soft landscaping and so on. Fine, good. Is there a second to that motion? It is seconded, Mr. Chang. It is seconded, Mr. Cheng. So moved and seconded. To defer for the reasons cited, all those in favor, show of hands, please. Motion carried, and the application is so deferred. Thank you. Panel moves along to number 28, 205 Monarch Park Ave. And on this application, the panel has before it submitted materials. There is a staff report from Urban Forestry and another staff report from City Planning. There is support in the form of written correspondence, 12 form letters, signed by the owners and occupants of 203, 207, 211, 213, 214, 218, 220, 224, 228, 230, and 232, Monarch Park, and 343, Milverton. So let's bring in that. Agent, please.
Hello, my name is Susanna. Can you hear me?
We do hear you quite clearly, thank you.
Okay, yeah. I had prepared a presentation, but just wondering if you'd like me to go through it?
Just let me check with my colleagues and see if that's requested. Colleagues, do we, do we need a presentation or do you want to go right to questions to the, if we don't need a presentation applicant, there may be some questions for you directly. Any?
Okay.
I'm not hearing any questions, so. Ms. Hayes, go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Hayes.
Just have a question with respect to, sorry, I'm trying to read my own writing. The description of the application speaks to a rear addition. And then, but one of the variances is for the front wall height, so can you help me?
Sure, yeah, it's not a rear addition, it's a third-story addition.
Okay, so the description of the application should change, right?
Yeah, the addition is set back from the.
Yes, I know it's stepped, it's stepped back, but it's not truly just a rear addition, so we should.
In fact, there's no rear addition, yeah.
Okay, so maybe we can just amend the purpose to make sure that that's clear. So from an FSI perspective and from the wall height perspective, your existing height, you said was eight, I think the plan said was 8.42, is that correct?
To the top of the peak?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, I know that there has been quite a lot of redevelopment on Monarch Park. Are the, the wall heights similar and are they common in that neighborhood?
Yeah, and in fact, in this presentation, you'll see a number of photos that describe pretty much, well, very, very similar to what we're intending on doing. To make a third story, we do need that extra height, but since it's set back from the street, I don't believe it has much impact on the street from a height of building perspective.
There are some photos?
And if the committee, and if the committee were inclined to approve this, have you seen the planning report suggesting that it be tied to plans?
Yeah, and my interpretation of the planning report was that we are enclosing a portion of the front porch to create a mudroom. Yeah, so they, I, I'm thinking that they just don't want us to take the whole house out.
That's right, yeah. So it's to ensure that the front yard setback variance is limited to.
Yes, exactly.
So you would have, you would have no concern with that?
No, we have no concern with that.
Okay, thank you very much. Those are my questions.
Yes.
Further questions for the applicant? Not hearing any. So I think we're ready now to take the application into committee for a motion. Who'd like to go ahead? Mr. Solomon, please.
Yeah, I think the variances are minor in nature, and so I would move approval of the variances subject to community planning conditions and urban forestry condition number one.
Very good. It is seconded by Ms. Hayes. It is therefore moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, show of hands, please. And that motion is carried. So number 28, 205 Monarch Park is approved. And that takes the panel on to number 29, 302 Oriole Parkway. Here before us, there are those materials submitted by the applicant, there is a revised plan of survey and revised site plan, floor plan, elevations, received on 22 March. Cover letter from the applicant, presentation materials, again from March, and one photograph of the existing tree on the front. And we have a staff report from Urban Forestry. So moderator, please bring in the.
Hello, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Please state your name. State your name, please.
It's Glenn Rubenoff from Rubenoff Design Group.
Good afternoon, okay. Okay, panel members, on this application, is anyone looking for a presentation or does anyone have questions? I have a question to follow, I'll follow mine. Ms. Hayes, you go first.
Thank you. Mr. Rubenoff, I appreciate you providing some information with respect to platform sizes, but I didn't see anything that reaches the number that you're requesting here. Can you please justify the variance for platform size?
Sure, sure. It's, it's a, it's actually kind of tucked in to the house. There's a roof in front of it and a roof behind it if you go to the third floor area. So it's actually only, the only visible portion of it is about half of it. So it's actually just, in fact, the third floor is just really a bathroom, a stairwell coming up to it, and that's it there. So if you could see the, the platform, it's right, it's right in the middle, so it's really not impacting anyone from the street or even from the backyard. It's just kind of tucked in, there's a roof on either side of it, and in that, in that regard, I believe that its impact is very limited in terms of overlook or whatnot. And it's just following the lines of where the house is.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to ask the staff, put up, put up the site plan, please, and focus in on the, on the rear yard. And my question to the applicant is, can you, can you please inform me as to the current surface treatment of the rear yard is what?
Well, right now, it's, it's primarily grass. I mean, it's, it's material, it's, you know, it's an older two-and-a-half-story house, you know, with a small patio and grass area that's back there.
But it's grass?
Yes.
Okay, okay. From an aerial photograph I was looking at, it didn't, it appeared to be.
It's a lawn. It is a lawn back there.
It is a lawn back there, okay.
Yes, you know, there's.
Very good. Any other questions for the applicant panel? There are none, so let's take this application into committee for a motion, please. Ms. Hayes, please continue.
Thank you. I think the variances, given the specifics of the property, I can support the platform variance because it is contained sort of within the roof line and would not have an impact. I can support the size in this instance, but that platform is awfully large if it was, you know, open air. There's no FSI variance, the height is not out of character, sidewalls is minor, the length is a very minor variance. So I can support the application and like to move a motion to approve the application subject to forestry condition number two.
Thank you. Is there a second there? It is seconded, Mr. Cheng.
I just want to add a comment that it is actually a pretty smart idea to turn an attic without windows into a sauna and an open patio. You actually cool down the house with the staircase going all the way up. So I'm just saying it's a great design.
Oh, okay.
Even though the patio seems to be outrageous on numbers, but it actually makes sense.
Okay. Very good, thank you. So it is moved and seconded to approve. All those in favor, show of hands. And that vote is unanimous, okay. Motion carried, application approved. Thank you. So as you'll remember, number 30 has been deferred. We go along to number 31, which is the last item in this segment. 195 Augusta Avenue. And on 195 Augusta, we have applicant materials, revised plan surveys, site plan, floor plans, elevations, their presentation slides received 16 March from the agent, email correspondence from Heritage Preservation, written correspondence in concern from 197 Augusta, and opposition from 197 Augusta, 197 Augusta again, from Bruce Dobson, from Irina Burfer, from 197 again, Luis Felipe Quintero, and from 193 Augusta also. So. Let's bring in the applicant now, please.
Hi, this is Mohammed, can you hear me?
We do hear you. State your name, please.
Yeah, this is Mohammed Furuzy from LHW Engineering, the agent for 195 Augusta Avenue, representing the applicant.
Very good. You now have five minutes to present the details of your proposal. Go ahead.
Yep. The, actually, we designed for the owner, owner of 195 Augusta. The subjected property is currently two-and-a-half-story single-family dwelling townhouse. And the propose of this application is to propose two-story rear addition plus side stairs and landing, which has zero setbacks with the property line. And the reason we have that on the side to better utilize the space between the existing exterior wall of the two neighbors' property and can provide more space for the soft landscaping at the back. The point is, this building will stay as a single-family dwelling unit after the construction. So, yep, I'm here if you have any question, concerns.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Let's, we have some speakers registered to speak. So. Moderator, let's, I guess just one speaker, right? Yeah.
Through Mr. Chair, yeah. Mrs. Burfer, you've been muted on your phone.
Sorry, we're trying to.
I'm sorry?
On your phone. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Hello, hi, so this is Mrs. DeHert and Mr. Dobson.
I have, hello.
You're with, you're with the committee of adjustment now. We hear you clearly. You have five minutes to express your concern.
Okay, we have a concern, I have a concern on the size of the proposal and the fact that it will completely change the light coming into our windows, our house. It will also change the feel of the backyard and the ability for our green space and the sense of residential presence in Kensington Market. It feels like buildings around are expanding too much and it's taking away from residential feel.
Also, Bruce would like to speak.
Bruce would like to speak as well, thank you.
One second, one second, please.
Okay, why are we doing that? I'll ask staff to bring up the site plan, please.
Pardon me?
I'm just speaking to one of the staff members.
Okay, yes, I'll give you a second then.
Okay, that's okay, you can go ahead now.
All right, so I used to own both properties and I sold this to the people next door, yes? And then I wanted to put in a divider fence last year, and they had a dispute about the landlines, and I knew exactly where they were because I own both properties. By the way, now they've submitted me these papers within less than a week ago that they're proposing a two-story addition, which is going to take away all the light from my second-floor kitchen. And also, I don't understand how the city allowed the front of the property that I've sold them to to be completely cleared of the green space in the front, and I do not want this to happen in my backyard also. So I planted many trees and I put my whole project with only a simple project of putting a divider fence between the land, and I've been on hold for one year. And all I got in respect, and I'm still friendly with my neighbors, we talk to each other, I don't want to go to war with these people, but, but they haven't even given me the common decency to show me where the property line is where I continue with my fence project.
We don't even see the plan.
And I haven't even been able to find the plans. I've been looking on the City of Toronto plans, I can't even see the proposed project, what the even proposed thing to do. Are they even going to have a window on my side? I have no idea what's going to be the exterior wall. I have no idea. So I'd like to hold this matter down until further review.
Let me ask you, which, this property is to your, which direction is it from you? East or west or north or south?
No, they're on my south side. They're going to take away all the sunlight from my garden.
That goes from east to south.
Yeah, Augusta is a north-south street, they're on the south side. I'm on the north of them, so if they put this proposed building up that high, it's all I'm going to have in my garden is shade.
Okay, let's put up the elevation then, put up the elevation for the, what would be the, the north side of this proposal, just for interest. And, okay, panel members, any questions for this speaker?
And also, also, these trees that we planted, they have been planted by ourselves for over 20 years, and they're going to die. There's a rose of Sharon out there, I've got climatis climbing up my wall.
What's the semi?
It's all going to be in shade.
Okay, then. Let's go back now then, let's go back now to the agent who will have an opportunity to respond to your concerns in rebuttal. We'll run back to the agent now.
Okay, uh, so can you hear me?
We do hear you.
Yeah, okay. So uh, first of all, this is some understandable concern. And uh, I'm not saying that this building won't uh won't uh block the lights like totally. Uh, it is gonna be some shadow. Uh, like, if you uh, if you take a look at our presentation and take a look at the backyard photo we have attached. So you can see uh the left-
Hang on a second. Okay, let's get that photo up. Is this the one you mean?
Like uh, our presentation in the third page. The presentation material. Yes. Like as you see, like, yeah, like what we what we have at the left side, there is a shadow from the neighbor of the left side, which is one nine three. Uh, so if we build this, uh, we will have some shadows. But uh, if you take a look at the uh site plan, if you bring up the site plan. Yep, thank you. So the direction of the property is uh east-west, right? And the sun track actually is from the north, like they come from the uh east at the morning and goes down to the west. So uh, at the start of the day, which the sign is right, uh, sun is rising, uh, we may have more shadow, but as sun is rising more uh to the noon, uh, we will have almost the same uh lights we have. But in terms of the window, I think we cannot do anything. But for gardening, uh, we we do have the lights. If you uh see, so if you see the south of the property, uh, this is the way that sun is moving during the day. So uh, the planet, I think they can get lights, but the windows, so definitely we we will have some shadow. Uh, and plus, we have a bit of uh a bit of distance between the property line and the uh the uh neighbors. At the one to one nine three, which is the south of our property, uh, we have one point two meter. And at this, at the north of our property from the neighbor, we have almost one foot, which is uh almost uh zero point four meter. So this is like uh how we can like, it it was the best we can do, like uh to minimize the shadow we can have there. Like, uh, uh, also, uh, like, uh, this neighbor, uh, they are most likely, like, uh, if we say long, like the building length, they have uh the length more than uh our like properties, like one nine three, one nine uh seven, one nine five. We are almost a shorter one, like. But uh, like, most of the property there, they have, like, longer building.
Are you saying that when you've, if you were to be approved and you constructed your development, that that new construction would be one of the short ones?
No, 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 before, before we construct.
Beforehand, okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Okay, other questions, panel? Now it's time for the panel. Open it up to panel for questions at this stage.
Chair, I'm just curious why there's no landscape variances for the front yard? Is there, does those provisions not apply to this property?
Okay, that's a-
I'm sorry, is that-
That's a question for you about fr- front yard. And why there is no soft soft landscape uh variance.
At the front ri- yard? So we we didn't touch the front yard, like?
No, I, no, I understand that. I'm just surprised it didn't come up in zoning review, but maybe there's different provisions on this street. That's all. Thank you.
No problem.
So the existing one-story addition um of the attached neighbor or townhouse that has spoken, that that one-story addition is currently deeper than yours. And the two-story addition that you're proposing would uh according to the plans generally meet the back wall of the of your other neighbor. Is that correct?
Uh, back wall of the-
Other ni- the neighbor on the other side.
Uh, yeah, almost.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Very good. If there are no more questions to put to the uh agent, then let's take this application into committee. Any comments or uh move to a motion? Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
Yeah, I I I can begin. I just want to note that there aren't any variances for uh side yard setback or for building length or for rear yard setback. And and so I'm having some difficulty then in um, you know, dealing with the concerns that have been raised by the adjacent uh landowners. I think the variances that are before us are minor and I would move approval with no conditions.
Very good. Is there a second? It is seconded, Ms. Hayes. So moved and seconded to approve this application. Those in favor, please show hands. And that is a unanimous vote to carry the motion and to approve the variances in this application. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. And we move on to. Okay, we're gonna go. We are uh moving now into our three-thirty segment with number thirty-two. Number thirty-two is thirty-nine Indian Grove. And on thirty-nine Indian Grove, the submitted materials are before us. And there are seven form letters in support from the owners and occupants of sixteen, eighteen, twenty-nine, forty-one, forty-five, and two-hundred-and-sixty-eight Indian Grove. Also from eight Indian Valley Crescent, all received before or on March twenty-nine. So let's bring in the uh agent for number thirty-two.
Uh, good afternoon, committee. My name is Brian Abbey. I am the agent for uh my client at three ninety, sorry, thirty-nine Indian Grove.
Good afternoon to you.
Good job. Thank you.
Panel members. Would anyone like to put questions to the applicant or to have a presentation? Any questions? Let's just see. Okay, I'm not hearing any questions, so uh I think we can take the application into into committee for a motion, please. Ms. Hayes, please proceed.
Thank you. Having reviewed all the materials on file, I think that what's being proposed and the variances being requested are appropriate. The revised or the proposed front elevation with the addition endeavors to um blend in or match the character of facades uh in the neighborhood. And I would be able to and would like to make a motion to approve the application with no conditions.
Thank you. Second to that? There is a second, Mr. Cheng. So moved and seconded to approve without condition. Those in favor. And that motion has carried unanimous vote. And the application is approved. Thank you for that. On number thirty-three, one twelve Warren Road. We have submitted materials. We have an arborist report from February. And presentation, presentation materials received March twenty-two. Urban Forestry has submitted a staff report. And there we have received four form letters in support. Owners and occupants of one eleven, one twenty, one twenty-three, and one twenty-six Warren. Okay. And on this application, we just have uh the agent registered. Okay. Agent, join us, please. State your name and your address.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chair. Last name is Bronskill, B R O N S K I L L, first initial D for David. Three-three-three E Bay Street, Suite thirty-four hundred, Toronto, Ontario. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Um, panel members. I'd like your opportunity here. If we'd like a presentation, we can ask for one or questions directly for the uh for the agent. Um, I'd like to ask the agent a question. If you're not gonna ask for a presentation, my my question, agent, is um explain why, with respect to soft landscaping at the front, why your application cannot comply?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. If 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 on the site plan, um
Let's bring it up.
Thank you, sir. It's a function, sir, of the driveway elements, which um in our review of the area are a common feature to have um uh this is a circular driveway where you can enter and exit in a in a forward motion. Um, it's common in the area. Um, that's what then triggers the soft yard uh landscaping variance because some of what is then um the proposed driveway, obviously, Mr. Chair, then doesn't count for front yard landscaping. And so that's why there are uh the two variances. Um, we've attempted to maximize the percentage of landscape open space in the front yard to get as close to the sixty percent as we can at forty-two point one six. And then in terms of the percentage of soft landscaped open space, again, we had tried to maximize to get as close as we could, even getting up to seventy point two-six percent um when the seventy-five percent is required.
Okay, um, is that, I mean, this this site plan tells us the story. A circular driveway concept understood. But, you know, if you notice, you know, just look at the front yard and they say the top left-hand corner of the of the circular driveway is a ninety-degree angle. There's a whole, it's a whole triangle in there that doesn't need to be. Um, and then maybe the driveway itself could be a little narrower. I I just think you've got a significant significant deficit. Deficiency in your soft landscaping and and some of it is um I think could be rectified and to make the the deficiency uh less, less onerous.
Um, yes, Mr. Chair, we did ask about what could be done. Um, there's a few things that go into the the driveway. Um, the widths, as you come from Warren Road, are uh just at ten feet or three meters. Um, so they're not extensive uh driveway widths or 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 um coming into the property. Where you you know, as you get closer to the garage, we're up to the four point three-six. Um, again, as you bend, there's some turning radius that's required. Uh, and then it comes down to just over three meters at its closest point at the front of the house. Um, part of what's being done with the driveway in front, as you know, to the northwest corner, um, uh, there there could be the opportunity to have, for example, a service vehicle parking, so it's not in the garage, sure, and it's off the street. So my my understanding is it's an attempt to have all of that on the front. Um, and the architect has done everything they can to up the landscaping to get to the numbers where they are as part of this.
Thank you. Any other questions, panel, for the uh for the applicant?
Yeah, I'd like to ask the applicant about the uh building length and if they can just explain what it exactly is being proposed in terms of that length and depth and how does that fit with that character of the rest of the area?
Yes, it it's a good question and and not surprisingly, through, Mr. Chair, I'd I'd anticipated that question because I understand that in looking at the numbers. Um, there there's a few things that go into this. First, we do have the usual um chart attached through you, Mr. Chair, that shows the um uh length variances that have been approved in the neighborhood. Um, uh, they 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 range, including up into the three and forties. Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Pull up the length variance chart.
It would be in for staff E for the presentation materials. Thank you very much. And and as just as is coming up through, Mr. Chair, I mean, we do this just to to get an idea of the numbers, just so that we can understand numerically if if we're proposing something that is not in keeping with the neighborhood. And then in a minute, sir, I'll I'll also talk then just about the qualitative aspects of it. And it may be, as was earlier this morning, that a condition, uh, that approval be substantially in accordance, be attached. Um, yeah, it's one of those ones with all the lovely green squares. Thanks to staff. We did one for FSI. And we did one for length. And we also did one for height. And I think it is that second one. And as you zoom in, Mr. Chair and committee, th- there's a wide variety of lengths. What we've done with the red circles is circle uh length variances that are actually greater than uh what has been proposed here. Um, and you can just see there's a wide variety. Um, it I I would say that length variances are frankly just quite, oh, sorry, it's even smaller for you now, Mr. Solomon. Um, um, I would just say that the length variances are are quite common in this neighborhood, both in terms of the amount of green that you would see, but also the numbers. And then the red circles uh that I had indicated to you show those lengths that are greater than than what we are seeking. There it is. Thanks, staff. If it loads up with the the numbers, and I think, sir, I hope you can see those faint red circles on your screen. So so quantitatively, it it fits uh with within the range. The actual measurement is the result of two things. First of all, in the underground or or basement, I should call it, um, there's an excavated area under the front porch that is shown on the basement floor plan as electrical. That adds three meters. Because as as the committee uh knows, um, that excavated portion with structure contributes to the length. So so there's three meters there that's under the front porch that's excavated for electrical. The balance at grade and and Ms. Hayes, I uh I know the question you asked me earlier today. At grade, then, what happens is there's still for the first floor, then, from that um uh excavated covered porch, uh twenty-seven point nine meters. It's measured to the back of all- It's measured to the back of only the one story and only a portion of the one story where there's a breakfast area and then an outdoor room. As you go up the building, the second floor has substantially decreased length. It actually to the back of, again, one of these bathtub areas that we talked about this morning. To the back of, on the second floor, the little projection for the bathtub and the master en suite, we're actually now down to twenty-two point nine seven meters. And if that bathtub projection were taken off, it's one point two two meters. We'd be down to twenty-one point seven seven meters on the second floor. And then the third floor, again, is much reduced in terms of its length. And that can be seen in any of the elevations and any of the side elevations. You can see at the back how the house steps down. And so it's really only the one-story portion. That has that additional length in terms of being visible. And what I would just say is the last thing, Mr Chair, to answer the question. It largely matches up with the one-story portion of the building on the Warren Road property to the north. And that's been a deliberate exercise by the architect. It is a little bit longer, I acknowledge that. But it's in keeping in terms of what's to the north with the building length that they have into the rear yard.
Okay, thank you.
I hope that answers your question, sir.
Okay, Mr Solomon, yes, go ahead.
I'd like to go back to the front yard landscaping issue. And if we can pull up the site plan. I'm wondering, what can the architect do to improve on the condition that's being proposed? Because essentially, the front yard landscaping is, would be less than what's required. And then the soft landscaping is connected back then to the front yard landscaping, which is already being reduced. So what can the architect do, looking at that driveway area, to improve then upon that landscaping? To get additional area that would become, be considered as landscaping?
Can I make it through you, Mr Chair, an unorthodox request to answer that question? This is normally where we would be in the room. I've worked with Mr Wengel on a few of these and I would turn to Mr Wengel. And be able to get a bit of an update in terms of what we might be able to do to answer your question. I apologize, it's difficult for me to answer that question and give you the numbers that might. I could give you vague suggestions about what might be able to be done, but I couldn't confirm them for you as landscaping numbers or percentages. Would it be possible just to hold this item, maybe go on to the next one? I could call Mr Wengel and just ask him that question that you just asked me, sir?
Well, here's what I think we might do. Yeah, I remain concerned about the front yard. I think because you are asking for generous consideration for depth and length. And so to reduce your front yard soft landscaping is still of concern to me, as my colleague is expressing. Why don't we do this? I think panel is just about, we've been going for about two hours and fifteen minutes. Let's recess, panel, for ten minutes to allow Mr Bronskill to make his phone contact. And we'll resume again at four forty after a ten-minute recess.
I appreciate that indulgence, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, can you hear me all right?
Well, Mr Bronskill, yes. No, we haven't resumed yet, so we're not waiting.
That's great, can I, sorry, sir, I'm gonna mute myself and just go back on the phone if that's all right.
That's good.
Thank you.
Okay, we resume. One of our members will be back in half an hour, so we're not going to wait for Mr Chang, he will return. And. We can now. Moderator, try to bring in, bring in the applicant again, please.
David, you've been unmuted again.
Raising it, guys, they are absolutely raising it.
Okay, that's Mr Bronskill?
Through you, Mr Chair, I think he's still on the phone with Mr Wengel, from what I could tell.
He should be careful, okay. Well.
Through you, Mr Chair, perhaps maybe we can hold this item down and move on?
I think it's a good point. Okay, so if you let Mr Bronskill know when he comes back that we're going to return to him. And that, for now, we are going to put, set aside thirty, number thirty-three. And go on to number thirty-four, we'll return to that sometime in the next little while. Number thirty-four is for five ninety-three Carly Ave. And on this application, committee has before it. Material submitted by the applicant, there's an arborist report from the Tree Doctor Inc. There is commenting report from community planning. And we do have support correspondence from number eight Frizzell Avenue. So on this, number thirty-four, let's bring the agent in to the conversation, please.
Hi there, committee, my name is Tim Weisner. Home by Tim and Kristen, I'm the agent for the applicant.
Good afternoon to you. Okay, panel members, on number thirty-four, we have the agent with us now. Any questions for the agent? Mr Solomon, please go ahead.
Yeah, I wonder if the agent can explain the proposed FSI. It does appear to be very high. And so if they can explain the rationale for that. What is the existing FSI? And what is the GFA addition that is being added as well? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Solomon, I will get those numbers up here in just a moment. The explanation for why the increase is necessary is that the client bought the home ten years ago. Moving in with one small child and no family in Toronto. And has since produced another three boys who will become teenagers shortly. And would like to stay in the community and house. And much of the extended family have now moved to Toronto, so this is a family gathering point for sure. The. The existing. I'm sorry, I don't want to be misquoted and give incorrect FSI here. But I'm just trying to pull that information up. Is this fitting for me? Specified root float, no?
Specified root float? No.
Wind load degree to his building area?
Building area there.
Okay. What we're trying to determine there, Agent, determine, Agent, is whether you're already above the point six-nine, and by how much you're actually increasing the FSI with this variance. Can you give us any, any general thoughts on that?
It's six hundred and ten square feet is what I have here.
Are you, do you, okay, you haven't been able to find the current, an existing FSI number?
It's nineteen hundred seventy-one square feet.
Well, I'm asking you to, to do the arithmetic for me, the.
Oh, sorry.
You're, you're, you're allowed point six-nine, but are you already beyond the point six-nine as the, as the property exists?
Oh, yes, I certainly believe so, I think that's typical of buildings in that area, and certainly along Carlaw.
Do you have a guess estimate as to where you stand right now, the existing structure? Hello?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking at, looking at this quickly to see if I can pull that information up for you.
Take a moment, take a moment.
Mr. Chair, maybe we can go on, because the applicant doesn't seem to be prepared to provide us with the information we need. I think we can move on to the next application, give them some time, but they have to satisfy us that they meet the tests, and I'm, I'm not sure they're able to gather the information.
Okay, so let's do that. Applicant, we're, we're gonna move on to the next application and come back to you, and.
My thanks to the Committee.
And what we're asking you to, to, the information we want, we want to know is what the current FSI is, so we can tell how much beyond the current FSI your request for one point three-five is. So we, we, we shall return to you, we're gonna go on now to number thirty-five, and we'll come back to you. So we now have two applications that are set aside, number thirty-three and number thirty-four.
Is Mr. Bronskill ready now?
We can jog back to number thirty-three and see if Mr. Bronskill is ready to join us.
We're doing a lot of jumping today.
We are, we're, we're very nimble.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Committee, I am here, and, and I do have a proposed modification for you, to hopefully address the concern about the front yard landscaping.
Well then, we're, we're listening.
Thank you. So I'm just looking at the public notice, Mr. Chair. Variance six deals with the minimum percentage of front yard that must be in the form of landscaping, and as you know, it's currently shown at forty-two percent, seven, eight point three-five square meters. With the wonderful assistance of, I'm actually gonna say his name, Mr. Chair, Marco Rotundo in Mr. Wengel's office, he's actually worked out something, as you know, to Mr. Chair, there's an area in the northwest corner of the plan where we could pick some up, and, and he's done everything he can, and I'm prepared, on behalf of the client, to modify variance six, so that it would now be fifty point three-four percent. And that's square meters, Mr. Chair, would be ninety-three point five-six square meters. So that's variance six.
Yes.
Even better news, I hope, his work actually results in the elimination of variance seven.
Very good. Okay, first, well, so the first thing, so I want to, are you, are you amending, are you amending the application now to, with those, those two things in mind?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chair.
So the, the, the application stands amended, panel. And we are dealing with an amended application, which obviously is less onerous than previous. Okay, very good. I think that equips us at this stage then, to take the application, Ms. Hayes, go ahead.
Oh, I thought, I was jumping ahead, I thought we were in committee.
Okay, well, we are gonna take the application into committee for a motion.
Okay, I just clicked the button too quickly, sorry, Mr. Chair. Although the variances on paper, with respect, with respect to length and depth, look large, they're not uncharacteristic of the neighborhood. As my colleague, Mr. Solomon, indicated, I think, you know, tying them to plan so that it's very clear on what is proposed is appropriate here, I think, in the context of the immediate neighborhood, what's being proposed is not out of character, and I believe meets the four tests, and I would be prepared to move a motion to approve the amended application, or the application as amended, subject to forestry condition number one and two.
Thank you for that. Is there a second to that motion? It is seconded by Mr. Solomon.
And if I can just add a comment, that I think the Committee appreciates the efforts of the applicant agent and the architect firm to improve upon the front yard landscaping, soft landscaping matters, because the Committee is taking these issues very seriously, and we're pleased to see this improvement.
Thank you. It is moved and seconded to approve the amended application. All those, as described, all those in favor, show of hands, please. That's unanimous vote, and the amended application, or the motion is carried, the amended application is so approved. Thank you, panel. And we move on now, well, we can, we, we'll, we'll check back now on number thirty-four and see where we stand with number thirty-four. So let's go back to, to Mr. Weisner.
You're what's sent to the City?
Mr. Weisner, you have been unmuted.
Mr. Weisner, we're, we're, we're back with you, have you, did you have enough time to do what you need to do?
I'm, I'm sorry, Committee, we're still working on it.
Okay, we're gonna move forward to number thirty-five, then we shall come back to you, take your time. And we move on to number thirty-five, five ninety-two Willard Ave. On five ninety-two Willard, panel has before it submitted materials, there's an advisory memo from urban forestry, and there is support in the form of an eight signature petition, signed by owners and occupants five eighty-one, five eight-three, five eight-five, five eight-seven, eight five eight-eight, five nine-four, five nine-six, Willard Ave. And we shall now ask the agent on this application to join us by stating your name, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Committee, my name is Kirk Bongers, and I'm speaking on behalf, as authorized agents, on behalf of the homeowners.
Very good, thank you. I'll check with my panel colleagues to see if there's any questions they have to put to you. I am not hearing any. That being the case, and no presentation having been requested, we can go into committee on this application, move to a motion. Mr. Solomon, please.
I think what's before us, the three variances are minor in nature, and I would move approval of the variances subject to urban forestry condition.
Thank you. Second to that. Is there a second to that motion?
Yeah, I was just trying, I didn't see the urban forestry condition, but maybe I missed it, oh, I missed it, sorry, thank you.
Okay.
I second.
Thank you. So moved and seconded to approve, subject to forestry, all those in favor. Motion carried, and the application is so approved, thanks very much. And we'll, we'll keep on going, on number thirty-six is twelve Walmsley. On this application, before us are the following materials. Application materials submitted, two photographs of the property, presentation materials from the agent, March twenty-three, staff report from urban forestry, and correspondence opposing from nine Baker Avenue, one ninety Grandview Boulevard South, and ten Walmsley Boulevard. So, Agent, please join us by stating your name.
Jonathan Venskelt, key one Kewatt, Anaffney.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, panel.
You have five minutes to present your application to the panel, please go ahead.
Yes, can we bring up the support material I filed? So the application before you today is for a new dwelling, there are a couple of aspects to the proposal I, I'd like to review, yes, if we could just zoom in on the front. This portion of Walmsley Avenue here is actually on the curve of the street, so if we actually look, the front lot line is curving from the northeast to the southwest. Now, that's important, because what that does is that skews the setbacks, which leads to the building depth variance. So if we look to the house at the east, at number ten, that house is considerably in front of the proposed dwelling that is before you today. We are actually in line with the existing house to the west. Now, if we could zoom out a little bit, please? In terms of the setbacks, I, I have identified the existing setbacks of the adjacent neighbors, really to show and identify the tightly knit urban area this is, that has a point three-nine existing side yard setback to the east, as well as a point six-one setback to the west. The existing setback of the dwelling there today essentially matches what is before you today on the west. Now, what we've done here to minimize impact to the neighbors, and if we could go to the last slide, please, in my material, I've given you a perspective, just to outline where the height has been, yes, that's it, perfect, please, we could zoom in on the heights. What, where the height has been appropriated, the request that is before you today is for that middle pitched roof. The parapet, the flat roof at the right are actually ten point two-seven meters high, which is below the zoning bylaw requirement of eleven meters. Additionally, that portion there is only in the middle of the dwelling, it does not extend over the, over the, sorry, to the east or the west wall. Now, conversations with planning, they did ask us to recess the third floor that is before you today, again, to take away some of that impact and mass from the street. Now, remember, the house to the east is considerably in front of this dwelling, so the actual impact of anything from the streetscape is again mitigated by that dwelling being significantly in front of it. Now, if we could go to the page before this, please? What I've done here is I've actually taken the dwelling at the side elevation, what that main wall height at the side porch dwelling is, is nine point two-eight meters. Again, a modest increase and a request over what is permitted of the zoning bylaw of eight point five. That main wall height that you see at ten point six is for, again, that middle rules through the center of the dwelling. The next two things I put here are the building length at the first floor of seventeen point eight-four meters. This zone does not have a minimum building length requirement, it is only building depth. Now, the building depth requirement and the variance that's before you today is again, as a result of that skewed front property line. The house, the dwelling was pushed to, to, away from that front property line to allow for a car at grade, as well as a car in the proposed integral garage. If we look, the second and third floor actually only have a building length of thirteen point four-two meters. Now, if we could go up two slides, please? Now, what I've done here is I've taken the existing dwellings to the east and the west to really show the impact of where that second floor comes, and where that main wall height is going to be perceived from the adjacent neighbors. So what we see here is the proposed second and third floor here is actually built behind the rear walls of both number ten and number seven. So as we saw on that previous slide with the, the side elevation, the actual second and third floor proposed before you today is built behind both adjacent dwellings' walls. So any impact of that increase of the side main wall height is mitigated by the fact that it just simply doesn't extend into their rear wall. And again, I think that's all I have to say for right now, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Thank you for that. I think we'll go to the, to the first speaker, please, moderator.
Michael, you have been unmuted.
Yeah, great, thank you, and thank you very much to the Committee for hearing me today, that was a very interesting presentation, it modifies maybe a few of the things that, that my family wanted to comment on, we, we own the building twelve Walmsley to the west of this.
Just a moment, please, could you state your name for us, please?
Oh, yeah, this is Michael Wickware of one ninety Grandview Boulevard South.
Go ahead, Michael.
Thank you. So I'm, I'm gonna take a, you know, I'm not a, a real estate expert, a planner, a lawyer, this is a bit of a common sense view, and some of my issues have been, I think, partly mitigated by the comments we just heard, but I just kind of went through the four criteria provided by the Committee, and I'll give you my perspective on it, as, you know, the owner of the, the adjacent building, which is a rental property, there are two families that live in that property right now, one on the main floor, one on the second floor. So I think those families are part of this discussion as well, from my point of view, and my family is the owner, this is an important, you know, asset to our family, it helps take care of retirement of our parents, like, this is an important thing in our life, and so, kind of going through the first criterion.
Just, just, I don't want to interrupt you, but I'm, just so I'm clear, which, which property is the one that you own?
Fourteen Walmsley.
Fourteen, next door, fourteen, next door to the west, okay, go ahead.
Next door to the west, yeah, thank you. So the variance requested is minor, so like I said, this doesn't exactly line up with the drawings I saw. What I, what I read was that the height limit for a side exterior main wall is eight and a half meters, and we're looking at about ten point six requested, so like a twenty-five percent variance, and I see the floor space request is about a twenty-seven percent increase, and the side yard setback, I think the zoning, you know, standard is point nine meters, the request is point three, that's like two-thirds less than, you know, than the code, so, you know, quantitatively, to me, as a layperson, that doesn't sound minor. Qualitatively, it sounds like, you know, enough of a difference that this property next door gets quite a bit bigger, it gets quite a bit more imposing, and I'm thinking this, of this mainly through the lens that our tenants next door have like ten windows that look onto this building, and that starts to really encroach on their, their light, their views. I think about when we had some pest control people over this year who had to work in the side of the house, does that start to affect access? If we had, you know, foundation issues, would that make it untenable to get equipment between the houses, like, it seems to me like every, every inch that we give up in space, and, 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 you know, blocking out the sky starts to kind of harm the, you know, make, make a major, not a minor, impact, so. Going through number two, the proposable is desirable for the appropriate development or use of the land. So I, I guess I would just go back to the idea that we've got ten windows, that two families are looking out every day.
Let's put up that, can we put up that elevation, please?
Yeah.
That, that's the, that's the, the west elevation of the subject property, that faces your property?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Let's put that up.
So the setback, actually, I, I didn't know about, and that, that, not the setback, but the, the cutback, or the, the way, the way it's sort of tiered back on the side seems to help it a bit, there's still that massive brick wall there, and I think overall, like a net, you know, decrease in the amount of, of light, the odds of seeing a tree or a bird, rather than a huge brick wall, seems to kind of go down. And, I mean, that means, I think, you know, it kind of hurts the quality of life of the two families who live in that building, it can hurt my family through lower rental income, a loss of property value, so I ask, is it desirable or appropriate? Maybe for the proposed builder it is, but I think for the three families. Maybe for the proposed builder it is, but I think for the three families next door, it's kind of a net negative. I think it does some harm. It disadvantages us. And I would say, from just a common sense point of view, why would you disadvantage potentially three families? Does that make our city a better, you know, a better place? I don't think so, from my point of view. Number three, the general intent and purpose of the city zoning and or bylaw are maintained. So I think, I mean, I'm having to make some inferences here, not a lawyer, but I think the rules are around making the city safe. I think making the city livable. If these variances can decrease the quality of life for two, three families, depending how you do the math, with no real benefit for anyone, does that align with the intent and purpose of the code? I think the answer is, is no.
I must ask you now for your final comment, please.
My final comment, general intent and purpose, maybe we want to have more density of housing in our city. I see there's a, you know, one, one, one thing I could grant here is that there's a basement unit, I think, proposed. And I thought, does that justify the variances? I don't think any of the variances are needed in order to have a, an extra unit. So does it support the official plan? No, it's neutral towards the plan. So again, no compelling reason to permit the variance from our point of view, more negatives than positives. So I submit that we should not permit the variances. And I appreciate having the chance to, to provide my point of view.
Thank you very much. Questions, panel, for the speaker? Any? No? Thank you. We'll go on now then to the second speaker who's registered.
Hello?
Daniel, you've been muted.
Hi, it's Daniel Garfield from ten Wamsley Boulevard. I'm representing my mother, who owns the house.
Very good.
Could you, could you please pull up my mother's objection letter and go to the end that shows two pictures? I don't, no, I don't think this one's the objection letter. I'm ten. Yeah.
Your mother's last name is what?
Garfield. Uh, this isn't it. Yeah, keep going, keep going. So this will give you a good view of what the neighbor is proposing. You can see my mother's house, which fits in with the area. And you can see the proposed, you know, basically is a monstrosity. If you go to the next page, you can see a side profile of the roof line that looks to be like a four-story building, but it's not. So obviously, my concerns are the same as, some of them are the same as number fourteen's. This is, I do not think this generally fits in with the neighborhood. If you pull up a location map, the location map that was sent out, you can see that Wamsley, all the houses have character. They all have a driveway beside them, you know, giving enough space between the houses. And I object to the setbacks, zero acts for the porch, point three meter setbacks for the walls. I, I think it's like number fourteen said, it's going to block all my mother's windows. It's also going to invade her privacy. In the back, there are a couple beautiful trees that are actually going to be coming down due to this building extending beyond my mother's home towards the back. And I do not think this is in general conformance with the official plan. I think this is crazy, and it will be the only house on the street that looks like this. And I think it sets a bad precedent for, you know, a charming, a charming street with original homes. I, the other thing which is not a planning problem, but I'm actually, I'm in the shoring and movement monitoring, building movement monitoring business. I don't know. And we deal with houses falling into adjacent homes or adjacent excavations quite frequently. And I do not see how this home can be built based on the setbacks safely without affecting the foundations of fourteen Wamsley and ten Wamsley. I think this is a potential lawsuit. I know that's not, you know, your job, but you're the first, first step in this process for the neighbor at number twelve. I, I just, I see major movement issues based on the elevations. If you pull up my, my mother's objective letter and you look at the elevations, the proximity to the neighboring buildings, the foundations are significantly undermined. So I don't know how they can safely build this. And I would ask for you to object this, you know, so that I don't have to go and appeal this, if this gets approved. And that's, that's basically all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, panel members, any, any questions here? Do you happen to know the height of your mother's house?
It, it should be on there. I actually, one of my good friends is.
Oh, yes, it is. Let's see, we're in on the neighbor's house and magnify it a bit. Maybe we can get the height.
And, and sorry, one last thing. I, I think my, you know, our neighbor at fourteen are also concerned about water management, you know, and access for maintenance. I know we don't have any easement or right-of-way, but building a house right up along the lot line allows for no work down the road if, if any work needs to be done.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I believe that's the last speaker registered. Moderator, okay. In that case, we can now circle back to the agent. We'll ask the agent to comment here in rebuttal and only to respond to the issues that were raised by the two speakers. So, Agent?
Yes, if we can actually zoom out on this a bit, please? I, I, I definitely appreciate neighbors submitting kind of drawings and background work like this. But this is horribly misleading and frankly inaccurate. So if we look at the nine point two-eight meters that's been identified from the existing house there, if you actually take the measurement to the flat roof of the proposal that's adjacent to that house, that is at nine point seven meters. So this is just simply not accurate in where it's being superimposed. We are basically a little bit over one foot two above that top of the roof to the flat roof that is adjacent to the dwelling. Now, if we could then go to the, again, go back maybe to the side. The side, yes, go to the next one, please? Again, very misleading in that I took the points from the survey and superimposed them again. The second and third floor of the proposed dwelling does not extend past the rear wall of either adjacent dwellings. It actually is built well in front of them. So to, to offer something like this, minus from a survey, I would just say that, can we take this with a little bit of caution that the, the material I've submitted is cut and paste from the survey and is one hundred percent accurate? And if we can go back to that, please, again, on the second floor of what I submitted? Any support material, actually, please?
I'm sorry, when was that submitted?
It just says, "Presentation E four," please. Yes, please. Actually, we can even zoom in on here. So what I've actually done here, again, on the survey, is if we look where we see proposed second and third floor exterior wall, I've made that dark really to emphasize where that fits in. Now, I can appreciate the neighbor at number fourteen speaking to, to the renters at his house. The setback that's there today is what we're proposing. Again, it is an existing two-story dwelling. So as it extends into the rear yard of both number fourteen and number ten, it is a one-story projection. There is no projection beyond either rear adjacent wall. And that's very important when we speak to impact because we talk about the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw and where that impact is felt from neighbors. So the impact of those side main wall heights are actually recessed from both adjacent neighbors. Again, just to look at my list here, just bear with me. It is not a basement unit. The actual proposal for this dwelling, really to go high level with provincial policy, is to allow for the current residents to grow old in there. So there is an elevator proposed. That's actually, will be a unit for their caregiver to live, so they don't have to, to actually go to a retirement home. And again, if we could just go back to my perspective I submitted, again, just to review the heights, just to make sure. And I think it's important for the neighbors also to understand where that height is being deployed. That's a good example, again, right there of where it's deployed. Again, the height request that's before you today for the eleven point five-seven meters is only for that middle portion, again, that is recessed into the middle of the house. And these roofs here are not seen by either adjacent neighbor. And, and I think that really, I think that's everything. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Hayes, go ahead with your question.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. First of all, thank you for the thorough presentation. That's been helpful. Sidewall height, and I appreciate, you know, all the explanation about the second and third floor being pulled back from the rear and et cetera. Is there any other properties that are three stories in the neighborhood and are, have sidewall or, or characteristics similar to what your client is proposing here? And if so, could you point those out? Please, and thank you.
Okay, a couple of things about side main wall height. These were not regulated under five six nine two thousand thirteen. So there could have been some variances that may have been approved, and I don't know. In terms of the streetscape itself, there are other three-story dwellings on the street. And again, the, the intent of that side main wall really is to limit that impact as it comes into the rear yards of it dominating, again, a blank brick wall from what a neighbor might see. So there are other dwellings, and I'm on Google right now, basically looking at a couple that would have similar side main wall heights at number six Wamsley. But what I would say about that at number six, it actually has a wide driveway that's adjacent to it. So what you would get is a perception that goes to that peak of the underside of that, of more of a mass. Because the setbacks here that exist are quite small, that actual impact of the side main wall height again is mitigated by that. Now, through you, Mr. Chair, Mrs. Hayes, that sidewall main wall height is actually measured to the middle roof of the architectural feature in the middle. The actual side main wall height of the side parapet is... Sorry, just bear with me. I have the plans open. If you could just give me one sec.
So you're saying that further to your explanation about the height being in just in that center part, the sidewall height, the highest, is part of that center part as well?
Correct. The actual side main wall height was taken to that middle projection. Yes, even though.
So the, so the, the outside walls of the building, what's the height of those?
If we go up to the previous one, it's actually on there. Yes, we can see if we zoom in. It is, I believe, nine, over to the other side, please? Nine point three-four to the underside of the east, so add another foot, so probably about nine point six, including the roof structure.
So for those, for those outside walls, you're looking for a variance of one point one meter, basically?
Correct, correct.
Did I hear you correctly to say that the setbacks that are proposed as part of this are existing?
No, the existing west setback is to remain as is. The, the, the current condition on the west is point three. The condition on the east is two point eight-six, which is where the, the drive aisle is right now.
But that hasn't drawn, that hasn't, that hasn't triggered, that hasn't triggered any of our variances, though. Those side yard setbacks have not triggered any of the six, five variances.
I believe there are variances for side yards.
There are, there are side yard variances. Yes, yes. So, so the, the side yard adjacent to number ten requests a reduction to point five-seven, so essentially two feet. It's a one-foot reduction in the, of what's in the zoning bylaw.
And that's necessary because?
It's an oddly shaped lot. So if, if you were to go to the.
So is it only, is it only that part at a certain pinch point?
Correct, correct.
And that's the narrowest?
Correct. If we go to the, I believe I put it in the supporting documents. Yeah, the, the building undulates. So it goes from point seven-one to point eight-one to point five-seven, and then increases at the rear. So it is an oddly shaped lot.
So that side yard, that setback is, is only for a small portion of the length of the dwelling?
It, it, it is consistent, but it also has cutouts in the middle in addition to, again, that, that being mitigated by it being one floor at the rear. So that setback at the rear is really only felt as one story, with the reduction for the, for the three-story dwelling being in the middle away from the adjacent neighbors. And again, the, the, the adjacent neighbor, when we speak of impact and character of the neighborhood, both, both existing neighbors, I mean, the existing neighbor to the east has a point three-nine meter existing setback and a point six-one meter setback on the west. So really, it's not out of character to have reductions of side yards like this. And again, the, the west is being maintained at the setback that's there.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about the proposed rear third floor balcony. Is there a privacy screening that's being proposed on that?
We haven't put any in. Again, what I would say is it's mitigated by it being recessed so far into the rear yard, but, but we would be happy to provide privacy screening as a condition of approval. That, that wouldn't be an issue.
So the parapet or the, the small section in the middle of the house, that's, is that to just allow higher ceilings in that portion of the third floor?
It's, it's really just an architectural feature, but at the rear of the dwelling, it does add additional windows at the rear. But it's more of an architectural feature because if we look at the, the perspective, that actually kind of comes up as a continuous column from grade that then almost has a half, yes. So it's actually just an architectural feature to come up into the, from that portion there.
Yeah, I just was wondering why you weren't choosing, why you would choose to seek extra height for, for, for that feature?
I, I mean, that is something, what I would say is I do have two requests. One is under four three eight dash eight-six, which is point one-seven. And the other is, maximum is eleven. Can you bear with me for one sec?
Yes. Sorry, Chair. I think we can.
And I'm also just curious about the flat roof provision. I don't believe in the R district.
I think you may have still needed a variance.
Yes.
I'm just curious, that's all. It doesn't.
Again, it was, yes, it was really more of an architectural feature just for that little portion there. You know, as, as I said, through you, Mr. Chairs, Mrs. Hayes, the, the rest of the dwelling is actually at ten point two-seven meters, which is, which is. at ten point two seven meters, which is below that zoning bylaw requirement.
Very good.
Thank you.
If that is the extent of the questions to the applicant, agent, then let's take the application into committee for motion. Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
Just some comments. Although the building may look very large, and I think it is offset by the fact that the second and third floors are set back, and I think if this was to be approved, that we tie the approval to the plans, which include site plan elevations and these perspective drawings as well, so that it really ties down the bulk and massing of the proposal as well as the side yards, because the side yards do start to increase as you move further towards the rear or the middle portion of the lot. And so I think it would be important to tie all of that down.
Makes sense. It does make sense. Good idea. If you wish, why don't you go ahead with the motion?
Okay, so I will put forward a motion to approve the variances. I think overall in totality, they are minor, provided that they are tied down so that it to the plans, because then I think it reflects that the variances, for example, side yards, don't apply to the totality of the side of each, of both sides, that in fact, they vary. And so that would be my, that's what I would put forward, approval subject to tying it to all the plans.
Very good. That is seconded by Ms. Hayes. It is moved and seconded.
And I noticed that there was something from urban forestry, but there was no specific comment as to which condition, so I'm assuming that there was no urban forestry conditions.
That's my understanding also.
Okay.
There is no forestry on this one, no. So it is moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, show of hands, please. That's unanimous, a unanimous vote to carry the motion and to approve the application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, are we going to go back to item number thirty-four? Is the applicant ready to proceed?
Yes, we are going now back to number thirty-four, and we're going to do that as our next item of business. So we'll bring Mr. Weisner back once again.
Hi there. The current FSI is one point zero one.
Thank you, that is a help. Okay. Very good, all right. So there, there, Mr. Solomon, is the answer to your question. It's one point zero one, and we now, so we're now comparing, we have that information to consider as we look at the one point three five minor variance request. Ms. Hayes, yes, go ahead, please.
I'd like the applicant's representative to speak to the encroachment of the front porch. From my reading of the site statistics, it's currently one point five, and you want to move to two point four four. Could you give us some submissions with respect to that, please?
It's, the front deck is over the existing porch, so there's, other than changing what is currently a roof line to a railing, there is no change to the setback there.
And have you seen the comments from the planning department with respect to the depth variance?
I have not, no.
So there was a planning email correspondence from March twenty-first.
Staff can present that on the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Sure.
Thank you. Then I don't have to read it, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's just, what it's basically saying is that if the committee were to approve the variances, that they're asking it be tied to plans to reflect that much of the depth variance is related to the walkout basement.
Yes, of course, I would be happy to have it tied to the drawings as presented.
Thank you.
With respect to the FSI, Agent, here's the question. So we now know what the FSI currently is, and it's, we are still talking about a significant, significant difference between one oh one and one point three five. So my question to you is, help me to understand why I can consider that large of a difference to be minor?
The current owners, we are, we're proposing extending to the length of the neighbor, and so there's already existing encroachments. The family is a family of five, and parents live away and come visit. We have, we've kept the existing front quite similar to the style to make it fit within the, to make it fit within the streetscape, and the spaces, the space is needed in order to house a family of three boys and two parents, and then visiting parents from Texas and other parts of the country. And that's, that's why we're, that's why we're proposing it.
And what I think in terms of, you know, I don't just think in terms of the number. I think about impact, because the impact is what I want to understand, it's more important in many ways than the number. So you're saying that the...
Mr. Chair, I think that it, I think that it is in keeping with other buildings on the street and other buildings that are in the immediate area for, for the variance and for the FSI, given the lot size.
Okay. Okay, so it's, it is, its impact is minor in the sense that it's not creating a wild new precedent? That makes sense to me.
Correct, and I don't believe that it's, it's certainly not a change from a street level, and if you take a quick Google, Google map tour of the street, you'll find very quickly that, that this is, this is by no means the largest or most overbearing home on the street.
And speaking, and speaking directly to the neighbor, we've kept it, we've kept it a similar size encroachment onto the back as the neighbor to help alleviate that feeling of encroaching further, and the front, the front doesn't change in that, in that manner.
Thank you very much, okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair, can we just have the other gentleman state his name and address for the record?
Sorry, I'm another agent, Chris Van Lera, home by Tim and Chris, thirty-six Holborn Street.
Thank you.
I think at this stage, we are ready to take this application into committee. Ms. Hayes?
Thank you, Chair. It was important to get that information from the applicant, especially with respect to the FSI. This neighborhood on both sides of this park have very substantial-sized homes, so I don't think that what's being proposed is uncharacteristics of the homes that are flanking the park. Many of them are, you know, three stories high, and many of them are quite deep and quite large. So having said that, I would be prepared to support the application, and if my colleagues have no other comments, I'd be prepared to move a motion to approve the application subject to the conditions outlined in the planning report.
Very good.
I can, I'd like to just add a comment, that I did find it very difficult to review this application, because information was not provided, and if somebody's coming forward with an application, the committee expects that the applicant will provide the information to help justify what it is they're proposing, and I did not see that before us, and I found that very difficult.
I agree. I think sometimes applicants forget that the onus is on them to demonstrate to the committee why the variances should be authorized. Hopefully, if there's another application, there would be better preparation. Thank you. But that would be my motion.
There's your motion. Does that motion draw a second? It is seconded by Mr. Chang. So it is moved and seconded to approve. And those in favor, please, show of hands. A unanimous vote carries the motion, and number thirty-four, five ninety-three carla, that application is approved. We now go back to our spot on the agenda, which is number thirty-seven. This is fifty-nine Don Valley Drive. And on fifty-nine Don Valley Drive, the panel has before it submitted materials, fourteen photos of the, of homes in the neighborhood, an arborist report, comparable decisions, letter from TRCA. There is comment from community planning and a staff report from urban forestry. There are six form letters in support, forty-three, five fifty-one, fifty-five, fifty-seven, sixty-one, and sixty-two Don Valley. And there is one form letter in support from forty-seven Don Valley. Okay. So we shall ask the applicant for number thirty-seven to join us now, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, my name is the agent.
Good afternoon to you. All right. Panel members, questions or presentation requests for this applicant? No, I'm not hearing any. So that, in that case, I believe we can take the application into committee for a motion, Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Just as a comment, although the proposed height increase looks high, I believe that the proposal is similar to other homes along this street, and so fits in with that character. So my motion would be to approve the variances subject to conditions from community planning and urban forestry, number three.
Very good. Seconded by Ms. Hayes. It is moved and seconded to approve, subject to planning and forestry. Those in favor, show of hands, please. There is a unanimous vote to carry the motion, and number thirty-seven is approved. Now, number thirty-eight has been withdrawn by the applicant, but we'll need a motion to close it. So, Ms. Hayes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Knowledge receipt of the withdrawal application and move to close the file.
Thank you. Second there. It is seconded, Mr. Chang. So moved and seconded to close the file, those in favor. Motion carried. File closed. On number thirty-nine, five seventy-seven Concord Avenue, the materials before the committee are those submitted with the application and three form letters in support signed by owners and occupants, five seventy-nine, five ninety-four Concord, and ten twenty-four So we shall look to the agent for number, for five seventy-seven Concord to join us now, please.
Hi, my name is Mike DeLevera, and I'm with replacement design located at nine eleven Davenport Road, and I'm here representing five seventy-seven Concord Avenue.
Very good. Good afternoon, okay. Okay, panel members, any requests for a presentation? Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
I've got a question on the FSI, and the applicant can explain why the proposed FSI, I believe the existing current is point five, and they're proposing to take it to one. Why is that appropriate, and how does that fit with the area?
Certainly. So our clients stress us that this is a house that they want to grow in and put their family for the long run. The FSI that we're proposing is going to allow us to do a third floor addition, bring our total amount of bedrooms to four. Currently, there's two on the second floor, so this will, quite a few bedrooms for our clients and their growing family. And with this renovation, we're also planning to add an apartment to the basement, hence our variances for some of the front yard landscaping due to the basement walkout at the front. So this is going to allow us to have an additional rental unit for the city and provide our clients the space they need for their growing family. In the area, there is also other examples of FSI that's higher than what we're proposing. For example, five fifty-nine Concord Avenue was approved for an FSI of one point three one, so we're well below other approvals that the area has seen already. Open to any other questions you might have?
I guess the problem I'm having is, you know, we're not, the committee's not being provided with information in advance of the hearing that this type of FSI is actually representative in the rest of the community, and so I have difficulty accepting what you're saying based on one site that you've mentioned, and so I don't know how to relate that to the rest of the area.
Well, even within a five hundred meter radius, from the research, we were able to, right, we have examples along Westmore, Yarmouth, all within a five hundred meter radius that well exceed us, and they have FSI's going from one all the way to one point nine, and that's all within a five hundred meter radius. And I believe if community planning had an issue with the FSI, they would have commented on this as well.
You're before the committee, and we don't, do we have that information as to the FSI's of the various properties in this, in this overall community? Have you provided that information to us?
We didn't submit that to the panel, but I do have a copy of that research here in front of me.
Well, I'm... I'm... Well, I'm wondering whether this should just be deferred and come back once we have that information so we can make a valid decision based on that information.
Well, it's been my experience that the point of the hearing itself is for us to present this information, not necessarily to provide a 20-page report beforehand.
Would you speak up a little bit? I'm having difficulty hearing you.
It's been my experience that the purpose of the hearing is to actually present this information to the panel, not necessarily to provide, say, a 20-page report beforehand.
Well, no, the panel needs, you know, the panel, we're dealing with 44 applications today and 2,000 pages of documentation between the morning and afternoon sessions. So we need the information in advance so that we can digest it over a number of days in advance of the hearing. That's, that's essential to us. Let me ask you a question. Your number two variance request relates to secondary suite entrance altering the front of the dwelling. Tell me, are you, are you asking to, as far as I can tell, you're asking there to legalize an existing front walkout that already exists? Is that correct?
No, it's actually proposed walkout. I don't believe we showed anything on the drawings that show it's existing. It is shown on our plans as a new upstairs that lead to the basement.
Okay, I'm sorry, again, once again, I didn't quite understand you. If you don't mind speaking, just say that again so I understand it, please.
Yes, no, the basement walkout to access the basement apartment, that isn't existing, that's proposed, that's.
You say it isn't existing or it is existing?
It isn't.
It's not existing?
No.
Okay.
We're removing part of the porch that's existing to provide the basement stairwell, but that is not an existing stair.
Thank you very much, okay. All right then, further questions? Ms. Hayes, go ahead.
Okay, so, back to the FSI question. And also just commentary, dealing with these applications virtually, we're not in a hearing room anymore where you can hand us paper when you go up to the podium. So I would like to indicate in response to my colleagues' comments and maybe just slow it down a little bit. 500 meters is really quite a large radius. So let's start smaller and then we can go out. Is there any other proposals of a semi on this street or neighboring streets that have an, that in that submission you were, wanted to tell us about from your research, that have an FSI similar to what you're requesting?
Yes, so 559 Concord Avenue.
What's the FSI there?
The FSI was approved for 1.33. And what we're asking for is 1.
Any others?
Along Yarmouth here, we have 184 Yarmouth with 107.
So Yarmouth, help me, where's Yarmouth? Is it behind or? Where is Yarmouth in relation to this?
Staff, could you pull up the location map here, please? We'll see if, on number thirty-nine.
Sorry, just pulling up the map myself.
I just didn't, I don't see it on the location map, so that's why I'm asking, so. If you could just help me, proximity of Yarmouth?
Yes, I'll just kind of pull that up as well. So, Yarmouth is actually one block over. So Concord runs horizontal, Yarmouth is one block over and runs horizontally. But that is within less than 500 meter radius really from the location of our property. There's also along, let's see here. There's Ozzington Avenue as well with 1.6, 1.59. That's within a few blocks here of our property as well.
So what's the, what in your submissions is the prevailing, you know, other than the 559, what's the prevailing FSI on Concord in the block or so that this property is located in?
So there's similar community applications that range from 0.9 FSI up to 1.33 that I have mentioned. Examples around the point, 0.97 with 421 Concord, 487 Concord, there's 0.96. So those are some other examples on the street itself with FSI's pretty close to what we're proposing as well.
Okay. That's helpful. I just have one other question. The semi that's attached, have you had, has your client had conversations with them? As I didn't see a letter from them unless I missed it.
So, that's another thing I wanted to bring up. We actually have eight letters of support in total. I believe the chair just mentioned three, but that does include the neighbors on either side of our property.
Were all of those sent in to us?
They're all part of ISE, so they're all.
They're there, okay. So the, your attached neighbor is supportive?
Yes.
Thank you.
As well as the one on the opposite side.
Yes, I had seen that one. I just didn't know about the attached one. Thank you.
All right then. If there are no further questions to put to the applicant, we can take this application into committee for discussion, for a motion. Any thoughts, anything anybody would like, anything anybody would like to say about the application?
Well, just first, I've been listening to all the information. I think it does look a bit bigger than, as a semi detached, but it's, there are some other larger houses and taller houses around. Both of them are detached. And the applicant was able to find out some examples as well. Both neighbors on both sides are okay with the application and supportive. I don't think there's any negative implication to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. If somebody else wants to comment, is anyone ready for a motion?
So I'll make a motion to, based on our discussion, I would like to propose a motion to support this application.
That is seconded. That is seconded by Ms. Hayes.
Yep. Snow condition, please.
Okay. So it is moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, show of hands, please. Those opposed, show of hands. Okay. Let the record show that Mr. Solomon is in dissent. The applicant, the motion is carried by a vote of three to one. Mr. Solomon in dissent. And with that, the application is approved. I don't believe any conditions were attached. I don't, did we miss any? No, there were no conditions attached, no. With that, the panel arrives at number 40. 102 Woodycrest Ave. And on 102 Woodycrest, we have before us the submitted materials. We have a staff report from urban forestry. There is an advisory memo from urban forestry. There are two form letters in support, 103 and 115 Woodycrest. And there is one piece of correspondence in opposition, 109 Woodycrest. And so we'll ask the agent to join us, please.
Hello again. My name is Mike De La Vera and with Replacement Design located at 911 Davenport Road. Here representing 2 Woodycrest.
Good afternoon again, okay. Panel members, any requests here for a presentation? Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
I have a question about the building length. If the applicant can just verify, does that building length only apply to the first floor? The 20-meter length?
Yes, the building length and depth are really just because of the first floor. Our second and third floor are in compliance. They step back. As each floor goes up, each floor steps back, steps in a little bit further than the last just to break up that look of a towering presence on the back end of the property. And the only reason we really had to go further on that first floor is due to the integral garage that was needed to provide parking on the lot. So that added to our depth of the first floor.
Thank you.
Ms. Hayes, please.
Just wanted to ask how the front wall height and rear wall height compare to, let's just say, the new build, relatively newer build at 103 or, or the next door to that at 107? Although 107 is not a new build, but it has quite a high portion at the rear.
So 103 is actually a two-story from the front. I believe it, it might have kind of a larger area on the second. Are you saying from your plans, it seems to have three? Because it's just.
No, I just wondered about the front wall, the front wall height, because you're asking for a front wall height? Variance as well?
So we do have a couple of variances related to the overall height just because of where the moving walls are being measured to. So in terms of the 8.6 meters, that's really in comparison to the house next door, it would be the existing peak. The way we designed this home, we actually stepped the first floor lower than what it is now. So instead of being like three feet out of the grade level, we're just under two feet. So that helped to bring down our height overall. And when you kind of compare it to the house at 100, we're actually only about a meter and a half taller than theirs, even with our third floor, even though they only have two stories, just because of the way everything's kind of being brought down and the style that we did for our roof. So comparison to the neighbors, even though our numbers might seem a little bit higher than what's allowed, it kind of fits well with the surrounding homes as well as some of the other existing third floors that are found all throughout Woodycrest itself.
Yeah, I think bringing, with respect to the garage, often we see lots of stairs up to the first floor. So it's nice to see that it's, the entryway isn't, is only a couple of steps up from grade that contributes to the minimizing the massing, I think, a bit. Okay, that's all the questions. Yeah, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, then let's take this application into committee for a motion. Mr. Solomon?
Yeah, I, I think that the variances that are being proposed are minor in nature. I think if we tie the variances to the approval to the plans, then that would ensure that the length and building length and depth only would apply to the first floor. So I would move approval of the variances, subject to conditions that it be tied to the plans and conditions from urban forestry, one and two.
Thank you. That motion is seconded, Ms. Hayes. It is moved and seconded to approve the application as described. Those in favor, show of hands, please. And that vote is unanimous to carry the motion and to so approve the application. Thank you. Number 41 is 145 Hillsdale Avenue West. And on 145 Hillsdale West, we've got the submitted materials. There is a revised plan of survey and revised site plan, floor plan, elevations. There's a letter explaining the revisions, March 22. And there's a variance rationale submitted by the agent, March 23. Urban Forestry has submitted a staff report. In support, there is a one-signature petition, signed by owners and occupants of 309 Oriole Parkway, plus correspondence from 134, 136, 141, and 143 Hillsdale West, 25, 29, and 30 Sproat, and 326 Leslie, also 36 and 44 Indian. There is opposition correspondence from 313 Oriole Parkway, Helen Campbell Reed, which includes some photographs. Okay. So, checking with you, moderator, we do have registered speakers on this one, yes? Okay. So we'll ask the agent to join us, please.
Good afternoon, committee members. My name is Bart Sokia. I'm the agent for the owners and the architect on the project.
Very good. You do have five minutes to present your proposal to the panel. Go ahead, please.
Okay, thanks very much. I, you know, I should point out quickly, the, we tried to correct this earlier, but there, there was, the petition with signatures from the project that I, was heard earlier today, got mixed up with this, with this application. So the petition per Sproat should not be, you know, part of the, part of this file. And we tried to clear it up earlier, but it didn't seem to get cleared up. So this, this is the correct one here.
Okay, so when I made reference to 25, 29, and 30 Sproat, I should erase that, that those weren't in support of this?
That's right. That's right.
Okay. Very good.
Okay. So in terms of this project and the initiation of this project, the owners got it going because they wish to have more space to support a growing family and the future of hybrid work at the home. And, you know, the neighborhood and community are important to them. They wish to live here at this location long term and they seek to add to the 100-year-old house to accommodate modern living. So on the site plan that you have, the, you know, given the lot size and the placement of the house, you know, the natural and really only viable location for an addition is at the rear of the house. The addition, so the, the addition is that darker portion at the south end of the house. So the addition complies with building length and setback requirements and that two stories complies with, with height limits. And when considering neighboring properties, you know, the placement of the addition at the rear is really is the least impactful place. On the east side, the addition is step back from the side lot line to relax the space adjacent to the right-of-way shared with 143 Hillsdale. And on the west side, the addition is adjacent to a large parking pad and vehicle turning area at the east end of 311 Oriole Parkway. Could you pull up the FSI map, please? That's a, that's a separate, it's a separate document. Yes, there it is, thanks. So with the, with the FSI variance, it's important to know that under exception, RD1402 it's important to know that under exception RD 1402, the zoning bylaw permits an FSI of 0.69 times the lot area on this property, which is 191.27 meter squared. The requested variance for FSI at is 0.74 times lot area, which is 203.98 meter squared. So what we're asking for is an additional floor area of 12.71 meters above what's permitted. And as you can see from the map, the variance is equal or greater than FSI 0.74 have been approved at 40 properties in the neighborhood in the last 10 years alone. So this points to a pattern of approvals for FSI by committee that suggests this is desirable and supportable increase in density and is a necessary increase toward the efficient and sustainable use of urban infrastructure. Could you bring up the shadow study, please? Thanks. We prepared a shadow study to compare the shadow impact of the existing house to the shadow created by the addition at, at March 21, June 21, and December 21. The shadow study was prepared to offer some relief to the owners of 313 Oriole Parkway by demonstrating that shadowing on 313 Oriole Parkway was minimal, if any. The study illustrates that the additional shadow falls primarily on the driveway to the west of 145 Hillsdale and on the vehicle parking area to the south of 313 Oriole Parkway. And the, you know, the, you know, the greatest impact on 313 Oriole Parkway is, of course, in the morning. And you see, those are the drawings that are on the left side. So the top drawing on the left is the existing building. And then the drawing on the bottom on the left is the, is the proposed building. And, and you can see that the, you know, the the main impact of the shadowing is on, on, there's a parking pad at the, at the southeast corner of 313 on, on the property at 311 Oriole Parkway. Could you go back to the
I'll ask you now to make your final comment, please.
Okay, can we just go quickly back to the site plan?
Well, I need you to make your final comment because you have, you've used your time.
Okay. The, we believe the, you know, the variance is, is a reasonable increase in floor area over what's permitted. And we, and request that committee consider supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, panel members, shall we hear first from the speaker who's standing by in opposition? And then come back to the agent with questions later. So we're going out
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. There are revised plans, and I believe, is there any revision to the variance?
Applicant, the question, very important. Applicant?
We did submit revised plans, and in the, and in the cover letter described it. So there was a small reduction in the in the floor area being requested.
You'll have to state it for the public record, please.
The, we did submit plans, revised plans, and there was a small reduction in the, in the floor area, I believe, if you look at the page above. There. So the reduction in floor, reduced the variance for FSI, which is item two from 0.74 times lot area of 204.48 meter squared to 0.74 times lot area equalling 203.98 meter squared.
Thank you.
Bart, can you hear us?
Yes. Oh, I can just hear you now. I can't hear you.
Mrs. Zoke, my apology to you. My mic was off. So I apologize to you. No wonder you couldn't hear me. I have a question for you.
Yes.
Just because, should we get this down now and we can move on? Your variance, you just have the one, it should now read point, 0.74. And then the numeric figure is 203.98 meter squared?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. My apology once again. Okay. Now we shall go to the next speaker. And have that speaker join us, please.
William, you've been unmuted.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee. My name is William Reed from 313 Oriole Parkway.
Yes.
My wife, my wife Helen and I are the next-door neighbors immediately to the west of 145 Hillsdale Avenue West.
Go ahead, please.
My wife has submitted a written submission to object to the minor variance, which has been uploaded to Application Information Center. Not 100% sure if this is appropriate, because this is my first time attending a committee of adjustment hearing.
Okay.
So my apologies for not knowing protocols. However, our preferred outcome today would be a deferral in the determination on the minor variance until some discussions can be finished with the, with the owners. That would allow them to complete their external design and facade, so that my wife and I would have the opportunity to conclude these discussions with a view to reaching a mutually agreeable compromise. I would like to explain the background behind the request. Our concerns with the variance can be summarized as follows. We are concerned about the loss of sunlight, privacy, views, spacing, and openness that would result from the mass heightened bulk of the proposed development. We're also concerned about damage to one of our trees. As undertaken at the bottom of my wife's written submission, we commenced discussions with the owners, is that the page three there? We commenced discussions with the owners in order to try to reach an amicable compromise, and these have actually gone quite well. We approached the owners with five specific changes that would lead us to support their application. Four of the changes focus primarily on privacy and our honey locust tree. These concerns are more freely described in my wife's written submission. And I'm pleased to say that we are very close to having an agreement in principle on all four of these items. However, we did get stuck on the fifth point. Our preference was for a one-story extension rather than a 20-foot extension to the second story, and the owners really wanted that second floor. If you refer to their plans, it would be A10, which shows the side elevation of the as it faces 313 Oriole Parkway. Thank you. Unfortunately, it's a second-floor extension that does actually take away from our sunlight, our views, spacing, and openness. The owners have provided a shadow study to show the impact that you saw a short while ago. However, the spring equinox was last week. I did mix and personal observations of the sun relative to of our various windows and found that the second-story extension would delay the sunlight in our kitchen, which was already the darkest room in our house, by about one hour. It would be longer than an hour in the winter months, shorter in the summer months. We are also concerned about the size of this 20-foot-tall extended west wall, which would increase the length of the west wall from approximately 35 feet, which it is just now, to approximately 55 feet in length. That's, that's measuring on the, on the second, second story. If we agreed to the loss of sunlight being created by the second story, we wondered if we could try to agree with the owners that the wall could be clad in something in keeping with the neighborhood that would be less detrimental to our own view. Unfortunately, the owners at this time are unable to be specific in this, in their own words. We haven't fully explored our options in this regard. My wife and I are therefore left feeling the unknown. Would this wall be blocking sunlight and a view of the trees and sky look like the side of a commercial building, with the owners encountering budgetary constraints that might lead them to cut back to colored vinyl siding or white aluminum siding? This is the owner's back wall, and quite aside to them, we are one of two homes in Oriole Parkway that would be greatly impacted by the extension of this wall. And the wall would also be seen from the speak, both Hillsdale Avenue and Oriole Parkway. We would like to be able to agree with the owners on a wall that is suitable to the neighborhood and as much as possible, not visually detrimental to us. We totally respect the owners require more time to explore their options in this regard, as exterior cladding and facade is key.
Mr. Reed, I'm going to interrupt you and ask you now to make your final comment, please.
If it's appropriate, we wonder if this application could be deferred to align time for a compromise to be reached between the owners and us.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for the, for the speaker panel? No. Okay. And moderator, do we have another speaker standing by?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have Mr. Wilson, but he's registered in support.
Registered in support. Does he wish to speak?
I don't know, but he's here.
Well, we'll ask him. If he's standing by, we'll ask him whether he wants to speak.
Thomas, you've been unmuted.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I am one of the owners at 143 Hillsdale Avenue West. We have signed the petition in support of the application. But I would like to make the committee aware that our support was based on the revised plans that I believe were submitted on March the 14th by the applicant. These revisions to the plans adjust the step back on the east side of the extension to make it easier for both our neighbors and ourselves to get our cars into their driveways. So my request would be that if the application is supported, that it is tied to plans specifically with respect to the step backs on the east side of the property.
Okay, thank you very much. And just for your information, the panel is dealing with the revised plans. We do have those from March 14. So those are the, those are the documents that are now up for either approval or rejection by the committee. Okay. Panel members, question for this speaker? No. Okay, then. We shall go back to the agent, who will have his, his opportunity now to comment in rebuttal. Agent?
Okay, thank you very much. All right, thanks, Mr. Reed, for the comments. If I can go through them one at a time here. In terms of loss of sunlight, the we attempted to be as accurate and, and fulsome with the, the shadow studies as possible. The, you know, there's, you know, along with the building, there's, you know, there's, there's garages, there's the garage at 313, there's trees on the site, there's fences and so on, so there's a lot of elements casting shadows there, but the, you know, we felt that the additional shadow cast by the, by the addition itself was, was relatively minor. And really was, you know, had the impact, the impact was really in the morning. And, and as, you know, there's a lot of shadowing, you know, when you've got late, early morning sun at a low angle. The views from 311, the, you know, the view directly west is at the existing building. The addition is to the southeast. And, you know, I, I think it's, you know, it's because, you know, the building is not longer than what's permitted, the, to, you know, to restrict a, you know, kind of a wider, you know, radius of view, you know, on, across the neighboring property at 311, it, it seems to be that would, that would be too restrictive to, you know, to pull the addition back just to, just to keep that view that's, you know, already at quite an oblique angle. In terms of privacy, there, we are proposing to relocate one existing window at the upper level, and I, I believe the owners have had some discussion where the, you know, the finish on the window could be translucent to, you know, allow light in, but to obscure view. And the, in, in terms of the tree, we, we will certainly be approaching Urban Forestry with an application for a permit and to do the, you know, all the appropriate application and processing that is required to, to protect the tree properly. The, you know, the, it was mentioned the building is, is going from 35 to 55 feet. There is actually an addition, a one-story addition at the back of the building already, so the, at the ground level, it's about 46 feet. And, yeah. So the, so we'll be extending another close to nine feet at the ground level and then, you know, fully out at the second floor. The, in terms of views from, you know, the impact of views from Oriole Parkway, I think it'd be quite difficult, difficult to actually see the addition from Oriole Parkway. There's, you know, there's very little space to see between the existing houses. And from Hillsdale itself, the, you know, the view impact is quite, is going to be quite minimal. The, you know, the wall cladding, I understand the wall cladding has been a bit of a sticking point. At this point, it's, you know, we, we don't have it definitely determined. I am sure that the owners of 145 Hillsdale will be thoughtful and sensitive about, you know, about what we're going to apply on the wall that faces 313 Oriole Parkway. So that's, you know, that, that is yet to be sorted out. The, and, and, you know, and, and finally, you know, it seems that the, you know, that the, that the issue of, of wall finish, while understandably important, you know, this is, this is something that the owners of 313 look directly at. While, while it's understandably important, it seems to be that it would be, you know, it's asking a little bit too much to
I'll ask you to make your final comment now, please.
That it, that this application be deferred on the basis of, of a wall finish. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I have a question for you. Yes, Mr. Reed did raise this idea of deferral. What's, what's your thought on, with respect to his suggestion of seeking deferral?
I'm, you know, I'm quite sure that the owners are not in, in favor of that. I think they would. You know, I think they have been communicating a good faith and negotiating a good faith, and I think they will continue to do that towards something that will,
Okay.
that will be, you know, satisfying for both parties.
Very, very good. And just on, just on that note, I have read the letter from Mr. and Mrs. Reed in which they do, you know, that they make reference to having been away, but on their return, having got in touch with you to open discussions, and this was letters from a week ago. But in that letter, they don't make any, they say that they are in discussions with you, but they don't make any reference there to requesting a deferral either, so the panel will go ahead and hear this application now and make a decision on it today. Any questions? Any questions, panel, for the agent? No. Okay. No questions for the agent. We've heard the speakers. In that case, we're ready to take this application into committee for a motion. We can have some discussion first, if you like. Mr. Chang, go ahead.
Yes, I would like to support this application because it is very, very minor. And I understand that there are still some even more minor issues to be resolved between the neighbor and the applicant. And I urge the applicant to take some time to speak to your neighbor as soon as possible because the, and I know the neighbor is very unfamiliar with the process, but they could have filed an appeal if it's not resolved. So I don't think there's a need for deferral. If you cannot settle with your neighbor, they will register today as a state holder, they would just go ahead and appeal the decision. So I think I am happy to propose an approval of this application. But just as a reminder to the applicant, you should address your neighbor's concern as soon as possible.
Okay. Motion to approve is that seconded, Ms. Hayes?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, are you adding fourth condition number two?
All right, I'm sorry, I forgot to add those conditions.
Also, it's fine, I will second it. I would just make, would like to make one comment, Mr. Chair, that the building materials or the type of building materials or whether it's brick or vinyl or wood is not something that this committee can rule on or dictate. And it's not a consideration of the request for the variance. So I do encourage the conversations, but it's not something that the committee could rule on or make as a condition, even if it was something that was in agreement.
I let impermeable pay that we can't.
Yes, that's right, in my understanding.
Can we add a further condition? The other abutting neighbor had indicated that they were interested in committee tying it to the revised plans because there were some revisions that addressed some issues that they had. And so can we add that, that it also be tied to the revised plans?
That's important, yes, that it be tied to the specific dimensions of revised plans. And that because of the very small change that was made to the meters squared, that we refer to this as the amended application. This is, the application is slightly amended, and we are dealing with revised plans. Okay. Just let's check with staff, have you captured what we're intending here with our motion?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, we have.
Okay. Let's see if we have a second to this motion. Is there a second to the motion? It is seconded, Ms. Hayes. So moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor show of hands, please. And that vote is unanimous to carry the motion and to approve the application. Panel moves on to number forty-two. Two fifty-eight Robert Street. Two fifty-eight Robert. The only materials before us are the, those submitted in the application and correspondence in support. Coming from two fifty-two Robert Street, Elizabeth Zhang. From two fifty-two Robert, Danny Benashai. And from two fifty-six Robert, Jonathan Pascaris. So let's have the agent on number forty-two join us, please.
Hi, I promise, committee, this is the last one I have for you today. My name is Mike Delavere, and what's replaced with design, we're here at nine eleven Davenport Road. And I'm here representing two fifty-eight Robert Street.
Very good, okay. Just to check with the moderator, moderator, is there a person standing by? There is, thank you. Okay, Mr. Delavere, you have five minutes to present your application to the panel. Go ahead.
Certainly. So we are seeking relief to the bylaw today to create a third story, sorry, a two-story rear addition. The variances we are seeking today are in line with similar approvals the committee has made in the past. And our clients have spoken to many of the neighbors, as you have mentioned, collecting the three letters of support, including our attached neighbor at two fifty-six. And we've had extensive discussions with the neighbor at two sixty, who I believe is the opposition here today. Upon designing the addition, it was important to us and the homeowners that we limit the addition to keep in the character of the neighborhood. And I believe we did this quite well by limiting the depth of the addition to that of the attached neighbor at two fifty-six. As you can see from our site plan, we're completely in line with that home as well. So we tried to keep things as consistent as we could. That allowed us to match their building depth as well. And it also kept our overall FSI area quite close to the permitted. With that, we're asking for one point zero five force index. This is a difference of only seven point two one square meters or point zero five FSI in relation to the permitted conditions. And we're also well below other approvals on the street itself, where we have examples ranging all the way up to one point three seven FSI on similar sized lots. And I can go through some of those instances as well if you would like. And although we have a site setback variance, this is due to the exception in this area for row houses due to the windows in the neighbor's side of the addition. Our addition has no windows on the side, but due to theirs, we're required to be at least five and a half meters from their side wall. Given the width of the lot being under five meters wide to begin with, it's impossible for us to really comply with this setback whatsoever. We've tried to limit the width of our addition as much as possible here while still giving the client what they needed on the interior. That's why we're going a little bit closer to the neighbor at two sixty than what's currently there, but we're still giving at least a one point five eight meter setback to their property. Open any questions you might have, and we can go from there.
Thank you very much. Okay. Let us go now to the person standing by in opposition.
Judith, you've been unmuted on your phone.
Yes. My name is Judith Robertson, and I've lived at two sixty Robert Street, a row house in between two fifty-eight Robert, a house we are here to discuss and two sixty-two Robert since nineteen ninety-eight. A row house inevitably means increased risk of fire and that the sound passage between the houses is always an issue. I am here on account of two issues which arise in part from being in a row. I am in favor of my neighbor's submission that the committee approved the variance. I only ask that they approve them subject to conditions. The first of these issues is a health issue. It concerns dust and discarded materials accruing over the time of demolition and construction. Having had lung cancer and lost two of the five lobes we have in our lungs, I am particularly sensitive to air quality. I asked from the neighbors of two fifty-eight specific solutions which would include, or at least measure, up to dust air extractors, tubes for transporting detritus from site to bin, a netting barrier and water. The answer I received was that drywall did not create dust, and they were going to use drywall. Well, what about dust and bad air from the demolition of the existing addition? What about the dust from any stone or cement cutting through the footing or landscape stages? Not to mention during the framing of the new addition. The second issue is over the promised soundproofing for all party walls. The owners have agreed from the beginning that soundproofing will be installed between all party walls. Soundproofing installed into an existing house is problematic and can sometimes be a waste of money. It takes time and energy and some money, but it is worth doing well. I consulted an experienced architect for his advice. He listed three steps, which I will repeat here. The first, use safe and sound fire and soundproof insulation. This has the benefit of increasing fire retardation and lessening the level of sound. Two, the type of drywall recommended is five eighths type X instead of normal drywall. This type of drywall will also increase fire retardation and lessen sound levels. The third is the installation of resilient channels. These channels get attached to the studs, and then the drywall gets attached to the studs. This helps to minimize any sound transmitted from the drywall through the studs to my drywall. There is also the level of STC that should be appropriate. It should be appropriate. And I'm sorry, I lost my place because the phone rang.
Do you mind speaking directly about the variance?
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Chang. Let's let the applicant have her five minutes. And go ahead, please. Did you find your place and go ahead?
Okay. The level of the STC, which is appropriate. STC is sound transmission class, and the IBC International Building Code has recommended sixty to sixty-five STC for houses with party walls. I recognize that the architect of the changes at two fifty-eight Robert may not yet have put his mind to what kind of soundproofing he is about to pursue. I hope, though, that when he does, that the committee will hold him to these standards.
Ms. Robertson, I must ask you now to make your concluding comments, please.
Okay, I'm asking that the committee hold the owners of two fifty-eight Robert to the standards asked for in this petition, both in the installation of soundproofing between our two houses and also in the handling of the dust and detritus, that it be up to the standard outlined in my petition with the use of the suggested similar or improved solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go back now to the applicant. And applicant, you'll have now an opportunity to comment. Or do we have another speaker? No, just the one speaker, okay. So we could go back to the applicant now. An applicant, you have a chance to comment with respect to comments made by the speaker. Go ahead.
Hi, yes, so we're aware of the concerns from the neighbor. Our clients have spoken to them for the last few weeks now about the dust concerns and fire ratings, soundproofing. Our clients haven't fully agreed to do soundproofing on the existing part of the party wall. That's just because there isn't really any work being planned on that portion. Any new addition, of course, has some OBC requirements for fire separations and sound penetration. So due to the proximity to the property line, most of the stuff they mentioned is already going to be required by the building code for the addition itself. And anytime we touch the party wall on the interior, of course, we're going to be subject to similar standards. But right now, the idea is that that party wall is not to be touched. It's really just the addition that these elements would be applied to. In terms of dust and kind of construction debris, we are aware of her concerns and health issues, and we are going to make the best attempt possible to try and mitigate those concerns where we can. She did mention a few things, it's just how we handle the debris. That is something we're in discussions with the contractor as well as the clients to see what we can do to best kind of accommodate that moving forward. But that'll be something we address a little closer to the time of construction start. I believe that's the main concern she mentioned between the dust and fire ratings. So just to wrap up it, fire ratings, sound transmissions, that's all OBC requirements. It's something that we're definitely going to be complying with as part of our building permit application. I think we've made the case for our FSI. If you'd like, I can mention some of the projects in the neighborhood as for our earlier discussions today, such as three ten Robert was approved for one thirty-seven. Sorry, two oh two Robert Street, one point two four.
Okay, okay. Very good, okay. And I'll just make the comment to Judith Robertson that, Judith, you know, if the application were to be approved and you didn't feel that your concerns with respect to construction issues like dust were being properly addressed, that you should contact and you can contact the City Construction Department, which does that specifically, deals with those matters. Okay, panel members, any questions for the applicant at this stage? Okay, in that case, we are ready to take this application into committee for a motion and/or discussion. But if anyone's ready for a motion, please proceed. Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
Yeah, there's three variances before us. I think they are all minor in nature. The actual increase in FSI is very small, and the actual increase in the GFA is very modest. And I believe that all the variances are minor, and I would move approval of the variances with no conditions.
Thank you. Seconded by Ms. Hayes. So it is moved and seconded to approve this application. All those in favor, please show hands. And that's a unanimous vote. It carries the motion, and the application is so approved. Thank you. We move on to number forty-three. Four forty-five Carofford Street. On this application, before the panel are submitted materials with the application, copies of minutes from the seventeen November twenty twenty-one public hearing, covering letter from planning consultant, a two thousand and six committee of adjustment decision, an arborist report. We have comment from community planning of city planning, and also a staff report from urban forestry. In support, there is correspondence received from two sixty-four Mount Rose, going back to October. And in opposition, there is correspondence received from two fifty Mount Rose, from Donald Ainsley, from two fifty Mount Rose, from Michael Twomley, from two fifty-two Mount Rose, and from, oh, from two fifty-two Mount Rose, correspondence both in November and more recently on the twenty-third of March. Okay. So on this application now, we shall ask the applicant to join us.
Hello?
Hello there, state your name, please.
Yes, indeed. My name is Adrian Lutavsky, I'm the planning consultant here, speaking on behalf of the applicant.
Very good. You have five minutes to present your application to the panel. Go ahead now.
Thank you very much. Well, I will simply start off by once again pointing out that you have in your file a letter from me dated November twelfth, and wherein I give a more detailed review of the application as well as my review of the four tests and why I believe all the variances before you meet those tests, and I believe they should be approved. I do note, of course, this letter was written in November, and this is, in fact, our second time back to the committee. Back then, there was a revision that was made to the plan, but it was made within the public notice period. And so at that hearing back in November, we requested a deferral to allow staff to review the revision at that time as well as for new public notice to be issued. And that's why we're back here before you again today. It is indeed the same proposal, but that's before you now, that was at the hearing back then. But we just needed to have that notice reissued in order to comply with all requirements of the Act. So I don't want to necessarily re-say everything that's in my letter. I want to focus really on the key points here that I, about the variances. There are eight variances before you. And the two things that I would really simply point out is that the vast majority of these variances were, in fact, already approved in two thousand and six, but at that time, under the auspices of the former city of Toronto zoning bylaw four three eight dash eighty-six. And so what we have here now today is a proposal to expand the house in a very minor way. And what it's really all about is that if it's possible to call up the site plan perhaps, just while I'm speaking, that would be very useful. Great. And if you could just zoom in, wonderful. And so what was approved back in 2006 was a secondary suite that is in the basement of that home. And what is attached to the side of the home there is a carport that is really primarily used for storage. What is proposed today is to expand the secondary suite into that carport space and then expand that carport space and to allow a little bit more GFA for that secondary suite. So you see a very modest one-story expansion to the north of the carport with an even smaller expansion back to the south. And that's really the extent of the exterior construction proposed. There would be some further interior modifications, but those really aren't the subject of the variances here today. And so I'm going to circle back to say once again that of the eight variances that are before you today, seven of them were approved in 2006. The only variance that was not considered at that time would be variance two, which talks about permitting an ancillary structure in the front yard. And that is that small triangular shed, which you can just make out at the top of the site plan there. It's just a one-story, well, exactly that. It's a shed. Now, the second point that I wanted to make about these variances is that most of them are driven by, both in 2006 and yet again today, by the unique size or shape, rather, of this property. As you can see, it's a triangle. And so there really isn't actually a rear yard technically under the zoning pileup. The front lot line is that longest curved line next to Crawford Street there. And then the other two lot lines are considered side lot lines, and there actually isn't a rear lot. And so what it does is it makes it for a very confusing thing to say exactly what is the front yard. Well, it's pretty much everything along that curved face of Crawford Street. And just because of the shape of the lot, there are only so many places you can build things. And so if we were to go through this list again, there's talk of the, one of the variances is to permit a pedestrian entrance to a secondary suite in the front yard. The ancillary structure is technically in the front yard because of this triangular shape. There is talk of a parking space that is in the front yard. Once again, all of these are driven by the triangular shape. They were back in 2006, and they're again today. And so in each of these cases, I think it's a very minor expansion that's being proposed. The one thing I actually would like to point out, once again, going back to this 2006 approval, but some of the variances that we're seeking today are, in fact, smaller than the ones that were approved back in 2006. For example, variance number three regarding...
I must ask you to make your final comment now, please.
Of course. I think I think I've said the key main points there. I have reviewed the forecasts in my letter. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review it yourself. I'm happy to answer any questions. I understand there are some concerns expressed by the neighbors. They were here to speak. I have responses to what they've provided in writing, but I believe I can address those during any rebuttal of what the neighbors may have to say.
Your time is up. Okay. Okay, then. Let's go to the speaker standing by moderator.
Donald, you've been unmuted.
All right. Can you guys hear me?
We hear you very loudly. Just a second. Yes, we hear you loud and clear. State your name, please.
I am Donald Ainsley. I live at 250 Montrose, which is immediately to the east of 445 Crawford. And actually, it would be helpful if you brought up the map of the area.
We'll do that now. Just give us a moment.
As you see, 445 Crawford is located basically due east of Deuceville Street. And that means for 250 Montrose and 252 Montrose, we look basically directly down Deuceville Street and have a major source of western light as a result. The proposed variance will involve putting up a structure that basically takes up all of the 250 Montrose lot line and part of 252, and thereby blocking that open exposure to the west for us. Moreover, the consultants suggested that the 2006 variance, they're more or less asking for the same thing. I will note that the 2006 variance allowed for construction very close to our lot line, three centimeters or two centimeters, I believe. This is before I owned this house. But with this proposed new addition, that will be quite a much larger encroachment on our lot line. There will be a significant amount of, our entire lot line will be covered up with our western yard being basically a wall from their addition as opposed to how it is now, where it's partially that wall that was approved in 2006 and partially open space. Those are my largest concerns, the very, very, very close proximity to our lot line that's being proposed. I think that variance is really unacceptable and should be rejected by this committee. And I also want to point to the parking variances, the previous meeting that I sat through to discover that the process, the proposal was being withdrawn at that time. They had to withdraw because they needed to readjust the parking spaces. They've just made them smaller, which I think is just artificial. There's no way that the cars will actually use that space, so it's actually putting more cars onto the street in a very crowded parking area already. So that's a secondary concern. My main concern is the encroachment on our lot line and the significant blockage of the sunlight coming from the western openness to Deuceville Street, as you can see from this layout. I'll stop there. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Panel members, questions here? Let's then return to the agent. And agent, you'll have an opportunity now to comment on that speaker's comments to us in rebuttal. Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity, and I do also appreciate the concerns expressed. I understand, but I do offer a response. In regards to the question of view and sunlight, I say again, this is a one-story addition. And if it's possible to call up the site plan again, I might find that useful in talking to it. I'd appreciate that. But in the meantime, it's a one-story addition. And likewise, the grade of my client's property is actually just a bit lower than the grade of the homes to the east. So even then, even though it's one story, it's about, I'd say roughly 12 to 18 inches below, so there's even a little bit of less height to deal with there. In my own personal opinion, I believe it's a modest expansion on the north and south side of that carport there. And importantly, I also point out that, at least in planning, there's really no necessarily, there's no right to a view. There is no zoning standard in place here that protects the view down Deuceville Street, nor is there any policy in the official plan, and the variances aren't really related to that. But so I still think, though, there will still be ample sunlight to come through despite this addition on the side there. I hear the concerns about construction. I say that this is really an expansion of an existing condition. That carport has been there for quite a long time, very long time, and this is expanding upon that existing setback there. And that setback was approved again back in 2006. And in terms of construction, I point out that there isn't a need. I've checked with the architects. There isn't a need for any access onto the neighboring properties. The construction can be carried out on the lot line entirely within a client's property, so that should be okay there. And I believe that is there in terms of, yeah, I don't believe there will be significant loss of light. I appreciate the concerns, but I think I've addressed those points. I'm not sure if there's any other questions from the committee.
Thank you very much. Panel members, your opportunity. Ms. Hayes, go ahead.
I just wanted to understand why the accessory structure or the shed has to be in the front yard.
Perhaps if I could ask the site plan to go up again, I appreciate that, to help answer that question. There are very few places to put a shed on the property. In terms of the variance issued, the only variance needed is for the front yard, and that is partly because of the shape of this property there. That corner is still considered the front yard because it's still on the Crawford Street frontage. But there's really only three places to put it. There's only three corners to put it, and there really isn't space in the other two when you take into account the large trees that are already in place on the property and on the adjacent city lands.
Thank you.
Question I can, hopefully I have.
Any further questions, panel? I'm not hearing any. And that tells me we can now take this application into committee for a motion. If anyone has a comment they'd like to make in advance, go ahead, please. Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
I do have concerns with the proposed side yard of essentially almost no setback. The addition would be built almost right on the property line, and they're actually then expanding from what the carport is beyond that and enlarging that area. And I just don't understand why they can't comply with the side yard setback. This is a new development, and I have concerns with that.
Other comment?
I guess I would just say that I would agree with Mr. Solomon with respect to the side yard. You know, certainly, I think they're trying to make a suite out of, you know, what is there, but the limitations, I think, in terms of the impact of continuing that negligible side yard, I don't think are appropriate.
Yeah, I think...
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I think unfortunately, the shape of the lot is like a piece of slice, basically, and there's not much choice that the applicant can do. Either he rotate the building and kind of adjust it. The buildable area of this lot is just not that big. So we either have to accept the fact that this is something that is, we should grant them some exception, not based on the previous projects that we have seen, and try to locate it from a streetscape type of view rather than focusing on the internal setbacks. I think that might be better in terms of, you know, in the respect to the shape of the site. But even with that, it is still very, very close to the property line, and that's very unfortunate.
Yes, it is.
Try to look at it from the street, you know, from Google Maps, the streets, and see how the impact of this building, how to imagine that, which there's more information, but I don't know. It's a very tricky site to start.
It's a tremendously tricky site because of very unusual shape.
You want to feed the parking and all the stuff, like most wish lists you have in a typical lot, wouldn't, like, I know you try to feed it like how a typical rectangular lot is, but I don't think we can feed everything while respecting the overall streetscape of this neighborhood.
Yeah. Yeah. So sometimes we see lots that, you know, pie in toward the back, or, but in this case, there is no back, as the applicant has pointed out. It's a perfect triangle. So the rear suite up against the property line like that is not desirable in my view. So I'll look to someone for a motion, please. Yes, Mr. Solomon.
Yeah, I would move a motion to refuse the variances. I don't believe that the development that would result would be appropriate, and I believe the impacts on the adjacent residential lots are not, are too negative and would not be appropriate. So I would move refusal.
Thank you. There is a second for that. It is by Ms. Hayes. So it is moved and seconded to refuse the application. Those in favor, show of hands, please. So the motion is carried by a unanimous vote. The application thereby is refused. Thank you. And with that, the panel moves on to the final...
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
We have to switch over to YouTube just for the final item.
Okay.
So for those of you who are following the hearing on our YouTube stream, we're just coming up on the time limit that we can actually stream any given YouTube stream, and we're going to switch over. So what you can do is you can go to the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and you can find Committee of Adjustment Public Hearing, Toronto East York, Part Two for the PM. So again, for those of you who are watching on YouTube, you'll be able to find the Part Two for the PM stream.